Good evening, everyone. Are you ready?
Yes.
Well, some comments left for you to order on November 14th at 6:30 PM. Those that come to the Senate. And so we always start out with a public comment at first and the end of the meeting. This public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. So it's for items, matters that the public wants to bring forth to the Senate Select Board. We can't respond because whatever you're talking about is obviously not on the agenda, but we certainly will take into account and may have on a future agenda. And just to remind people, there's other ways to talk this way. We have regular office hours on certain Tuesdays. Mr. Cyrus can be found regularly at the transfer station, although I did ask him to stay in the winter. He said no. And we all have emails. Everybody knows what they are saying. You don't need that. Everybody else has, and so we're easy to reach. So please reach out and let us know what you've got on your mind. Okay, with that, any public comments to start out with? Okay, so we moved up the consensus agenda tonight because I want to get a couple of things out of the way before we get into the meat of the meeting. So, Mr. Robbins, would you mind joining us at the table? Okay, so we've got items A through G. So, anyone want to hold A? C? D? Yes. So go D. E? F has been tabled tomorrow. I'm voting F tonight. And then G?
I've got a comment.
So, hold G?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve, consider the items A, B, C, E. On a favor? Okay. So, Mr. Robbins, you have resigned from EDC.
Pardon me?
Yes. You have been involved in EDC since day one, if my research is correct. I know you well. I've known you for 32 years. My family, we know your family. I always wish you well. I thank you so much for what you do for this town. Would I hope we continue to do for this town? I've been told to be very proud of you, and you may rethink your decision to resign from Rodeo. Which is how I know you so well, or scrap your W-club would not be the same without you, for sure. You always have a smile on your face. You always are positive about everything you work on. You never stop. You truly love this town. You are the perfect example of what we need in volunteers. And I would say is that it's capable of so much time. It's gone past 32 years. So, you know what I think about you, so I wish you well, and I hope I see you as much as I do.
Can I make your comment? Well, it's a privilege being here, and thank you so much for your comments. I have to admit, when you called me the other night and said, Chris, can you come to our meeting? There was no, well, this is what we want to do. It was just to come to this board meeting with five of you. And I actually was in the middle of a spy movie on TV, and I was very tense. You called up. And I hung up, and I said, sure, I think it's another comedian meeting. And then I talked to my wife. We're gonna, I gotta go in front of the board. Honey, did we pay our taxes? And this is nicer than that.
Well, I'm sorry that you assumed that it was gonna be something as serious as that.
So, I want to thank you very much because it's been an honor and a privilege to help this town grow and prosper. And I can't go forward without thanking my wife, who saw me leaving the house for endless hours of committee work, as you all are witness to. But the board members over the years, since we actually had an economic development team, and then it became the EDC appointed by the board. So, all the record, all the support from the different board members, without your leadership, without your support, we couldn't go forward. And then the endless hours that all the committee members who were sitting on the EDC have been just enormous. And then we had people like, you know, like the Monship and our grant writer, Claire Reynolds, and others who made all the difference. But the other committees who worked with us, because we can't do economic development without everybody participating. And so I can't thank you enough. It's been a wonderful experience. You have each made a difference along with other residents in this town, and it's been fun to watch you go forward.
I'm sure somebody, anybody else?
Hi, Chris. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for everything you've done over the many, many years. I've had the pleasure of serving with you, supporting you. And this town has been well-served, and I've learned a lot from you. And, you know, I think the town is in a better place because of a lot of the customer service-driven discussions that we have had, and we've seen a lot of those great things take place. Recognition for the employees, for the volunteers. And I know you felt very strongly about that. And I thank you for that, and so many other things that I've had the pleasure of learning from you and serving with you. So, the town has been a great loss for this, Chris. I certainly wish you well, and I thank you.
Chris, I thank you for all the conversations you've had over the years. I appreciate every single one of them, and your passion is what I think I miss the most. But I certainly hope the conversations won't stop and that you'll keep us surprised on what we're doing right and wrong, and everywhere in between. So, thanks for all your service for the town. I didn't realize that you served for 32 years, so that's amazing, and congratulations.
Thank you. Chris, I certainly respect your service to your country and to your town. And as you know, a lot of important things happen based on committee work in South Borough. And huge push from volunteers of all types who have been reading that pack. And so, again, we need more folks like you in terms of being able to get in there, do your part as a citizen, and contribute to town comfort. So, we appreciate your contributions of that long, great time. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Chris, I've always admired you for every meeting you're, or you speak on that. Your remarks are always something very positive. Really admire.
Thank you very much.
I'm still cheering the test bills page. All right. Okay, so who held the? Okay. Make motion to approve the resignation for Mr. Robbins.
Second.
Favor. Okay. Who held the? Yes.
I think we need to talk about these things.
Oh, I think for me, the seventh, we can, I'm okay with that.
That's one I'm not okay with.
Okay.
So, all right. Okay, so we'll take those. Okay, so. This is picking up where we left off at the last meeting. Ms. Melanowski's husband is a department in the habit town, so she can keep this up for this discussion. All right, so we're picking this up where we left off at the last meeting. So, everyone can also. And so, Mr. Cyrus asked us to basically sleep on our decision whether we are going to include the $300,000 that the ARPA committee recommended to use to a hazard slash premium pay to firefighters and policemen. So, we had a big discussion, or one discussion last meeting. We had quite a bit of public comment from various people. So, we're going to vote tonight, one way or the other. And then we begin with this one. Okay, Mr. Cyrus, you want to start out with?
Thank you. And as our chair said, I'd asked for some time based on what I heard at last week's meeting, the last time's meeting. And I had an opportunity to go back and look at not only the ARPA regulations, but what some other towns are doing again. And my concern, as I expressed last time, was to find a way, if we did this, to make it fair and consistent across all staff that were involved down in service during the COVID time. And clearly, we've had some additional input from various individuals since our last meeting, and I appreciate those comments. I continue to believe that, as I thought about ways to do this, I can fairly easily identify people, functions, who reasonably would feel it has not been done fairly. And so, that to me is a major concern, and I've not been able to figure that out. So, I guess at this point, I'm inclined not to approve this expenditure and support the motion that we had last time. So, I understand that. Appreciate service of all town employees. It was a difficult time for everyone, including Public Safety and places like DPW, Board of Health, the schools, et cetera. A lot of hardship there, and people stepped up and did a remarkable job. And again, no lack of appreciation for that, but I'm not eager to find something that winds up with many people complaining that they weren't treated fairly or somebody else had a better deal than they did. And that would really be unfortunate, I think, so. To support this expenditure at this point.
I agree. I think that the last two weeks showed that the process of coming with a fair way of allocating this money and determining who would be eligible would probably become more complicated than we had discussed at the first meeting. And so, I think you said it very well, Sam, that value and appreciate the efforts that all town employees and in particular, Public Safety employees made, particularly during this first, you know, most stressful weeks of the, weeks or months of a pandemic and the spring of 2020. It just becomes really difficult to think about how you draw lines of the periods afterwards and who becomes eligible. So, for that reason, I'm also not so.
So, during this last two weeks, I've kind of changed my position on this a little bit. I went back and looked. I thought about what you said, Sam, and trying to find an equitable way. I pulled payroll records for that time. I looked at, and trying to find an equitable way. I looked at from three, March of 20, to December of 20, because COVID vaccines came out in February. So, that gave an extra layer of protection, I felt, to most people. You know, people that were working from home and whatnot were able to come back. So, I kind of looked through that time period, and I got the numbers. I had, actually, one of my concerns at our last meeting was just police and fire. I had a concern with that. How do we find which groups? So, I kind of did an overall look at who had day-to-day contact specifically. I came up with, obviously, police, fire. I left off communications because through COVID, the buildings were closed. I came up with DPW, through the transfer station, through the office. People were still coming in, getting stickers, doing the business that they needed to do. I came up with the Public Health Nurse was another one. I had put Laura the Lolly in the mix because she was still doing inspections. She's over the $90,000 base threshold.
Yep.
But you could make a case as the state requires. I looked at as well, let me see, police, fire, DPW facilities. Again, they continue to do business. I left in the Business Administrator for the Fire Department and the Police because they still have the day-to-day contact with the officers, and they were, they had potential exposure as well. So, in doing this, I came up with a list of 53, roughly 53 people, and five call firefighters. That's an estimated number. I got the 5,000, and I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people about this. I've had a ton of phone calls, people for, people against, people saying that money should go to offset the tax base. So, I looked at trying to find a happy medium based on these employees. So, I don't know, obviously, the board doesn't have the list that I came up with. And I agree, no matter what the number is, Sam, people are not going to be happy. I completely get that. But I just, I looked at the time period when there were no vaccines and people had face-to-face exposure. So, I came up with the number roughly of, I thought, $2,000 for full-time and for the call, I came up with $1,000. So, it comes out to roughly $111,000. I think there's a way that we could possibly do this and also still offset some of the tax rate for the taxpayers as well. And I think people are looking for that, especially going into the next fiscal year. I think that that's a big concern for people. So, this was just some of the data that I had pulled, hadn't shared it with the board, obviously. Not sure if the board wants to take a look at this, or, you know, if the board is just kind of in the mindset that we aren't going to make everybody happy, and we should just, based on experience from other towns as well.
I looked at the salary data also, as a matter of fact, and similar access numbers. And again, I had a hard time with folks who, for example, are no longer on the payroll at this point.
Yeah.
For example, Public Health Nurse. In fact, there were two Public Health Nurses at that time.
Yeah.
And so, you know, again, to me, that's not a very fair situation with them.
Yeah.
So, you know, and again, I struggled with a better way. I certainly understand what you did, and that does make sense, but still come out with the inconsistency that troubles me.
I would just say that I included data very obviously in that number as well because he came into the town as well. So, again, it's the word of the board. I'm happy to share this information. We can, back in the meeting if we wanted to, or the board could just take a position on this tonight. But as of the last meeting, my position, I still have the same mindset, that it can't be just one police and fire group. There was no way that I could, I still couldn't just approve that. So, that's kind of why I'm, so, sorry.
As usual, you've done your due diligence and your public address. But I get to, I don't think there's been any issue about, we've got a lot on our foot, I mean, you know. But I drive around thinking about this one. I just can't get there as far as leaving out teachers, teachers in my opinion. Yes, maybe, you know, a lot of, they did a lot of remote teaching at first, but then they didn't. You had cafeteria workers that had to prepare those lunches every single day. Everybody did what they had to do to get us through COVID, whatever their job was. All the people at the town kept everything going. And so, I just can't get conscious, leave out anybody that worked for this town, that kept this town going, voting, and anything that did the job they were supposed to do. This really, I want to acknowledge, we got your letter today, so I want to make sure you know we got it, and your colleagues, so thank you very much for that. I definitely think you've done a good part. I think the, I mentioned you perfectly. And therefore, I can't get through because it dilutes it so much. It doesn't make sense. So, I just, I haven't changed my mind from two weeks ago, so I am ready to vote on this tonight, even if it is, and then just starting to do.
I mean, I'm, obviously, I'm not going to hold up the vote, Kathy, and I think it's important that whatever vote this board takes, that it's a unanimous vote. So, voting last, as far as how the board's gonna vote. Because, again, I, I, I'll just leave it at that. I said.
Thank you. So, I'm going to make a motion to not support the ARPA committee recommendation of $300,000 for hazard premium pay for certain.
Second. Want to take public comment?
We are, so. Lunch is on the table, okay? Any further discussion from the board before we take public comment? This can be a real discussion.
I guess that just the, for Lisa, it's obviously a lot of work to put together that list, and I'm sure you had to kind of make some decisions and draw some lines. I guess one thing I think of is, how confident are you that the list doesn't include, you know, one other person who is probably deserved? You know, it's, that's, it's hard to draw these types of lines.
And I get it. The list is selected, and I get that. And, you know, I still agree, I can't with you, Kathy, that the teacher should be on it, but you're offered, they're not allowed to be. So, but, again, trying to encumber who I thought we could possibly do something. Again, knowing, no one's going to be happy at the end of the day. I completely understand that, but I thought at least we could do the exercise and try to come up with something. And you're right, there's always going to be somebody that we may say after the fact, we should have done this, or we should have done this. Absolutely, I guess we'd be a bit of you on that. Just to select. Absolutely.
Okay, so, before we do the public comment, so, we heard a lot from a lot of policeman department last, most department. So, what I've asked tonight is that we hear from others that didn't comment last time, at least first, and especially those that may have things to add to the discussion last time if you were here. Okay? All right, those hands are still up. They took that part. Okay, so, coming up.
Thank you. Amory, can I have an opportunity, just, I want to briefly speak as a resident. Oh, sorry, Heath with us, 33, big little room. So, I want to briefly speak as a resident, because there's actually two, two different things I want to talk about here, and then briefly speak as the Union Vice President, if that's possible. And I'll make, and I will make it brief.
We're supposed to, we're supposed to keep you to three minutes of this.
And that's, and I, and I prepped for that. So, we should, we should be good. So, that being said, just as we all just honored Mr. Robbins for, you know, his work that he's done in town on committees and in boards or whatever else he's been on, I just know him as a man about town. That was a really nice thing for you to do. That was, that was, that was really nice to watch. That, that being said, you have to look at the ARPA, now I'm speaking as a resident, so we know. Look at the ARPA committee. Look at the ARPA committee and look at the work they put in to coming up with their suggestions, coming up with their numbers, coming back with their order of importance. That being said, listen, it's got that little button. You can shut that right off. So, that being said, on that, what I would have a hard time with, you know, so I'm an elected member of the board in town, so I didn't, you know, so I volunteered in a way. But these committee members really volunteer. And I, you know, know members of that board, and I'm sure that's no secret. But I know members of that board, and I remember, you know, them taking homework, homework. I really do very little homework, you know, there's a couple hours of preparation, and there was homework, week after week after week after week. And then here we, here, my issue with it as a resident is here we sit that now I can see and I completely, and can even almost support dissecting that a little bit as a select board and say, maybe this is too high, maybe this is maybe what, or wherever you need to put it. But to scrap what they have said, and they took, you know, such an amount of time to come up with, to me, if I was on a committee, I personally would just be insulted, is all I'm saying. I'm just saying, me personally. And I think in coming up with, you know, where we're going with this or not going with this, I think you have to take that into consideration, because to go against that would make me say, well, I'm not going to volunteer. For what? If it's just going to go to you folks, and you're just going to go poof? Well, that, that does, I don't think that sends the right message. Doesn't send the right message to me. I just wanted to share that with you. Again, I would respect if you were to, you know, to make, make moves as you have, Lisa. That, that's okay, but to go poof to it, to me, is, that makes my brain go poof. So, there you go. So, there's my three minutes as a resident. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So.
Before you go on to your role as the president.
Sure, sure.
So, we have thought long apart about not going with the recommendation of ARPA. So far, we have picked them off one at a time, and we have agreed with both. This is the first one that we may, you know, disagree with. So, just so you know, it was, we just gave the short script. You can see, we have not given the short script. We have spent a lot of time researching this and thinking about this. Every single person in this committee has pulled their own data as far as looking at stuff. So, we have not given this recommendation short script. I just want you to know that. We have also great respect for what the ARPA committee did and the work they did. We know that they did young ones work, and we absolutely believe that the starting point is with the recommendation, and then we need to have a really good reason not to go with it. So, just to be clear.
Okay.
All right, go ahead to the judge.
Thank you. Okay, so, as the police officers, Union Vice President, I guess I want to just keep it simple, because I can definitely ramble. So, I hear a lot of talk about, you know, the teachers being included. Okay? Mike, I, my question would be, did the teachers, as we've sent a letter, DPW has sent a letter, and fire has sent a letter, did the teacher send a letter requesting any ARPA funds?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so there's, there's a difference there. And as far as I know, and there's possibly someone that might speak to this, I do know that, you know, while teachers maybe, personally, I'll feel that they maybe do something, I do also know that they are in support of, of what we're seeking as well. But again, will you speak to that after? Okay, thank you. Um, so, here it is. At the, at the onset of this, this virus, what did we all think? As a police officer, you go to work, and you think, well, you don't think because you get so used to it, but you think, okay, there is a risk to my job. There's a risk, but you know what that risk is. It's this bad guy, that bad guy. How am I prepared to deal with this bad guy, that bad guy? The bad guy we had to deal with was a virus nobody knew anything about. So, even for me personally, going into work every single day was painful. If I had, I only have two years, 10 months, and three weeks left of this job. I'm not talented, but I'm just telling you that that's what I have left. And if I had had even just another year, I would have left early just to not have to deal with that. That's how, that's how much this really affected me. I didn't want anything to do with it. I'm a germaphobe as it is, and then to have to go into something that when every day you turn on the television and there are bodies under blankets lined up on a pier in New York with people walking in circles going, what are we doing with these bodies? Not what are we doing about this virus? What are we doing with these bodies? And then I'm going into work, spending an hour defunking the cruiser because I don't know who's been in it and who they've touched. And to do that day after day after day after day, I think that's different. And it's no disrespect to the teachers because, you know, that's, or anyone that had to work through it. But there's a difference. And we're not talking about giving us a bonus. We're not talking about giving us premium pay. We're talking about compensating us for a hazardous situation. In my contract, in our contract, excuse me, there is a clause for strike pay, which is also referenced as hazardous duty pay. Well, that's, if we were to work a strike, we get paid double time. So, double time. So, what that would equate to over a year's time is about two weeks worth of, worth of, if we're talking about the figure here of the initial 5,000. That's two weeks of hazardous duty pay. Two weeks. I would say that I'm a lot more fearful of a virus that at the time, I didn't know if it was going in my eyeball, my nose, and my ear. I didn't know where it was going or how it was coming. I thought I was going to die. Instead of standing out on a picket line with some guys from the gas company, holding signs going, hey, give me more money. Yeah, I'll take that every day. So, it looks like something that maybe we're going to have to, you know, moving forward, maybe put something like that in our contract, because I didn't want to be at work. I'll tell you that, every single day. But for me, probably lasted about a year of not wanting anything to do with it. But doing it, just as everybody else that's here, representing the DPW, representing the fire department, representing the police. I imagine we all have the same story or very similar. That being said, then there's the risk. So, if, if, just real quick, so who in this room, right, went into work thinking that I could get COVID? That's a simple question, right? Could get COVID. Yeah? Now, those that are now here, representing the factions DPW, Fire, and Police, actually got COVID. You know, just to be honest. Keep your hands up, please, because this is very important, right? How many would your hands still up? And you can put them down if you really don't, don't believe it. Till you got it through your work and your exposures at work. Me too. But yet, we all still came in. We all still did what we had to do. And all we're saying is that any kind of thing to say, we appreciate that you went above and beyond. that you went above and beyond the risk of logging into your computer at home, whether it be teaching, whether it be communicating with the board, whether, whatever the job might have been. Thank you for going out there, knowing that maybe when you go out there, that could be your last day. Knowing that. And like I said, that, that, that fear for me was tenfold over the fear of me going to work and figuring I'm going to get hurt by somebody. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Hamilton, I was the chair of the ARPA committee. And I apologize for only getting involved today, I know this has been going on for the last week or so. So I just, I just wanted to quickly kind of clarify what our recommendations are because I think some of it has been lost in translation a little bit. Because we're talking just about the police and fire. Our original recommendation, so, so the way it worked was that we had recommendations for the premium pay from Fire and Police. When that recommendation came to us, we also couldn't figure out a fair way to say only Fire and Police, so we went and looked at the expanded list. And so when we reached out to Mark Fipple, we came back with probably a very similar list to what Lisa has. There were 59 full-time staff members and five part-time staff members who qualified for this, right? So I think it's really important to be clear that there's like very strict state requirements for who can and cannot get this pay, right? And I know we talk a lot about the teachers and I've had kids in elementary school during this, right? Like I saw what the teachers were, were up against, but, but again, they do not qualify for this pay through this program. It's just where the lines are drawn, they were not in person, right? It's a different thing. And so again, I just, I just want to be clear that that $300,000 does represent all the employees that came back to the list that are eligible for this pay. So I just think that's a really important part, right? Because they know we're saying it's hard to kind of find those lines, like there, there is a list, it's, it's pretty discreet. I think the only names I'm hearing that weren't on our original was probably the two nursing staff, if they were temporary employees. So I, if, if there were any other questions around sort of how we came up with our recommendations, I'd be happy to help kind of provide clarity to that. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the get it, I think, and how we presented it, it seems to have been a little bit lost kind of what the final recommendation was.
So we appreciate you coming tonight. Any questions for you?
Yeah, I have a question. And I did sit on most of your meetings and I heard a lot of that discussion. I don't recall, what, what did you talk about in terms of folks who are no longer working with the town that were during that time period, or people who today are here but were not during that particular time period? Which time period did you?
Yes, I believe we looked exclusively at the spring. And so I think that should be, it, it should only be people who were there in the spring of 2020. I need to go back and get the exact dates from the list that Mark pulled for us.
Three months, six months or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, during the role of height of the pandemic, that was, that was our consideration.
And for those who are no longer working with the town.
I, I think you wouldn't get it, right? Like in the same way that anyone else who's, you know, you're up for a bonus at work but you're not there anymore, you don't get bonus.
That was my recollection, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, that's a pity, but it's what it is.
And that's the same basis I use on my list as well, is if they were still employed with the town today.
Yeah.
I'll just, it would have been helpful if we could have had your list. I think we all did a lot of legwork trying to come up with the list. It might have been helpful if we could have seen it. And again, you didn't know, we didn't, certainly we didn't ask. So that's not on you in any way, that, that falls on us, but it's just more a comment Kathy than a better question. We could have had the list.
Andrew. Okay. So let's do maybe one more.
Good evening, again. Neil Spazin, Fire Department. So I speak on behalf of a whole group of people, not just the Fire Department or myself. So when we were here last, two weeks ago, and it's been reiterated as how can this be fair and equitable? And you mentioned just a couple of specific departments. So we took it upon ourselves to reach out to our fellow companions in the different departments that might be considered. Board of Health, Health Department, talked to them, they fully support us, they don't believe that they had as much extreme risk during the phase because they were able to stay out because there was no testing at that point. So they support us. And some of them even believe that, you know, they weren't here at the height. So they feel that they, they shouldn't be entitled to it. One of them actually worked in hospitals at the time, so she completely understands what we went through. We've reached out to the teachers. They wouldn't be able to officially say something based on having to have a meeting, but verbally, the president does support the fire getting it. We talked to the council on aging, the leadership at the senior center, obviously they had positions. They adamantly and fully support us getting it and would not be offended whatsoever. And they actually said that they would talk if we wanted them here tonight, but we felt that we could just speak on behalf. Who else have we talked to? Obviously, facilities is included on this list for the proposal. The building department, it's already been ready, when we talked to the building department, they felt that they, you know, they, they supported us as well, but they felt they were eligible and they, they made a good statement and had all their data and they had supported and they had submitted recommendations as well, so we support them if that's included as well as Ms. Rossio did on some information. So, and then some of the other departments, obviously we didn't include Town Hall just for the fact that these were the departments we felt that you had advised us that could be the ones that would be more apt to be a little jaded because they would potentially be in the same category of doing as higher work as, as we may have been. So we just wanted to address that, you know, having that we did our homework as well, so there will be no issues. And as the chair of the ARPA committee said, that the teachers wouldn't be eligible as it is anyway, so. That's what I got for you. Thank you.
So we've got a you keep your comments to three minutes?
Yes, ma'am. Do you want to toy global, you guys all know me. I guess I would say, I've been listening back and forth, I hear hazardous duty pay. And for that period of time that you're mentioning, as Keith just mentioned, nobody knew what they were dealing with, nobody know how they're going to get it, where it was coming from, all these other things. Yet, they went out there day to day. Nobody, when somebody calls 911, they're expecting Fire or Police at their door to take care of them. When I was in the service, after Vietnam, we got hazardous duty pay. Because we were in an area that we could have or couldn't have got shot at. Hazardous duty pay for these ladies and gentlemen, that when they went out on the streets and into homes, in wherever they had to go, in an accident on Route 9, on the Mass Pike, or whatever, they were going in a hazardous situation. And that's why I think this, this, these funds should be paying them for hazardous duty pay. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so we've got a motion, it's been made to not approve $300,000 for the ARPA committee recommendation, it's been seconded. It's been discussed. Any more discussion before we go? All in favor? Thank you for coming tonight. I know this both didn't go the way you wanted you to go, and I'm sorry, but we made a decision based on what we think is the right thing to do for, for this particular item. We appreciate everything that you do. Now, don't come up yet, I'm going to call you need to order.
Advisory comes a meeting to order at 7:10.
Okay. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Melhaski as she has been intimately involved in this through her service on the to T V S and explain.
Okay, great, thank you. Hi Bill, how are you?
How are you?
Good. So this request originated with a Board of Health request for 16 Meadow Lane. And the reason is because as they were drawing up plans to build the house on that property, they discovered a pipe that is owned by the town, but there is no easement for the pipe on that property. So the challenge with it was, because the pipe was not known, they had to request a variance from where they wanted to put the septic system. So that's why it came to the Board of Health. And as part of this process, Karen Galligan from the DPW sent a letter to the Board of Health stating that the pipe is working. It's needed for drainage for more than just 16 Meadow Lane. So if you've driven up Meadow Lane, it's on the curve at the top of that road. And it does feed out onto the reservoir underneath the paved service road over there. So we did some digging on the Board of Health side, found that there was a 1975 Warren article related to Meadow Lane and requesting funding for easements related to drainage pipes. Although it's unclear from that article if that's actually related to the property of 16 Meadow Lane. And in 1977, there's two easements that are reported that are related to 3 Meadow Lane and 7 Meadow Lane. So I find it curious that those who were filed right after this Warren article. So we had council look at it and it's unclear to council whether this 1975 Warren article was truly for 16 Meadow Lane in addition to 3 and 7 or not, it's just not, it's just not documented well enough to know. And so as part of the Board of Health's due diligence, Mr. Putre and his team put a camera up the pipe so that we would know what we were dealing with, to make sure it wasn't like Swiss cheese. And, you know, if the town's going to take ownership, we wanted to make sure that DPW knew what they were signing up for. And it appears that the pipe isn't sound working condition, so we were comfortable with that. So the Board of Health ended up granting the variance for the septic system to be closer to the drainage pipe, given that there is an impervious barrier or curtain wall built around the septic system. There's no environmental concerns related to that conservation agent weighed in on it as well. And as part of the motion that Board of Health made for, to grant the easement, I'm sorry, to grant the variance, we requested that Mr. Putre come forward to the select board for an easement for the pipe so that we document that the pipe is there and the town has access to the pipe if needed. And Town Council kind of said we do not need town meeting to grant a drainage easement. That was a lot, that was great. Okay, well done.
I commented I didn't see the video, riveting video.
You did watch it? Yes, and there was a frog.
This seems pretty cut and dry. Anybody have any questions? So sorry, Mr. Putre, you Okay, so just moving.
Sure. So I move that the select board grant the drainage easement for lot to be number 16 Meadow Lane.
Second.
Thank you. Just a quick clarification on how to move forward. We have, we have given a draft easement to the town. We have also, sometimes when these pipes get laid, it was originally called for a 30-foot wide easement. Sometimes the pipes don't get laid exactly where they're supposed to. And that is the case here, so the pipe was about five feet from the edge. We increased the easement size to 35 feet so that when the town wanted to, if they had to repair it, they would not be going over land that they don't have an easement. We have the plan, which I believe Ms. Hale has in her, in her possession. And we, and the draft of the easement. So I believe all it would require for us is to work with, I guess, Town Council to approve the wording of the easement. And then we would sign it, the town would then take it and report it on record, is that correct?
Just acting as, as an observer. Which way is this easement going? Who controls it and who is benefiting from it?
So Putre is granting the town the easement to have this pipe that's on his property.
I think the motion and the vote was just the opposite. You guys are supposed to be granting it.
Okay. Okay, so I strike the prior motion. And I move that the town accept the drainage easement for lot to be Meadow Lane, to be 16 Meadow Lane.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Thank you. Ms. Hale, do you want me to work with you to facilitate that?
Council, yes.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Samina. Mr. Belling, I want you to come up to the table with you. Mr. Samina is your role as town moderator and crucial pointer of on his years as well as current chair of Okay, so.
I'm not sure that this is an issue, but we've got a form of the public which planning board here.
So Bill, you want to
So Deb's here, Sam's here. That's what I'm saying, but if you're gonna, again, I think it's, I worry that it's a fine line with the open meeting law that we're discussing the public works plan in open, three members are present, one or two could be participating and speaking.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, Mr. Belling, would you mind leaving the meeting so we can have discussion? Because if you don't, we probably can go into that voice for time. I'm sorry.
I, I know, I just, I don't want the
You can make a public comment after everything's done and done, yes, you can make a comment later.
Sorry, Deb.
So Mr. Samina called me and asked if he could come and I can talk about the public. So just to remind everyone, the public looks painful, it's like no other animal we have in this town. It is partially appointed by Mr. Samina as moderator. Three members and public, and planning board points to two members. So let's just go back and make sure we all understand what this thing is. 1991, when the decision was made to basically merge various departments, so we ended up with the DPW that we have today. It was done through a special act. It was done through a special act, one of the laws that's found in Massachusetts. Part of that special act, section five says the following. There's hereby appointed in town South for a public works planning board to advise the board of selectmen in matters of planning, energy, and financing of said town. That's what it says. The rest of the top section is on the committee. So literally once and as it describes this hybrid entity. So we don't have a whole lot to go on as far as, there's no charge that goes into details as far as what's supposed to do this law we have. So forward to today, there's been quite a bit of controversy about this group. It hasn't been that very regularly in the last few years. A couple of members would like to see it meet more regularly in Duport. I believe, it's fairly well to speak, I'm sorry, I will speak for you, but I do believe part of this development position is that they do it, that select board asks for advice. His belief is that we need to actively seek advice from this group for them to move in, meet and provide the advice. They don't really say that. I mean, again, it says they're there to give us advice. It doesn't say we're supposed to ask for advice. It doesn't say what advice we're supposed to give. So this really doesn't provide a whole lot of framework as far as what you do here. But we've spent an awful lot of time talking about this group. So I just want tonight to see if we can turn some resolution that seems to be comfortable going forward so that we must spend more time on this, right? So that's the vote and leaving. I don't want the answer is, I hope that somebody here has the answer. I don't know what it is. This thing is so weird. Since then, we've also added a very strong capital committee that's now permanent standing committee whose charge is to basically take the input from various departments as far as working on the capital, put together the plan, and present it to the state, right? So that, you know, takes care of some of what P W P P might do, but certainly not a lot of things that we do if we wanted to do it, we chose to do it. Again, they don't have the right first pass. They can try unsolicited ones, right? I will say this. I think one of Mr. Bollin's comments about the way this committee has been treated in the past is similar to one that I experienced on the old Capitol, which is we did our work, the select board worked. Sorry, none of these people, none of you guys, but, and yet you do work, and you don't want to be more, right? You went to meet something, you went to tell me, but we made this part that there's been a certain amount of time. So I think that, that, that part too. So I want Mr. Bollin to speak and Mr. Samino to speak, and then I'm going to hopefully come up with maybe a plan to go forward so that we really don't get involved in this in the future, maybe. Okay, so Bill, you want to start?
Well, I don't know if you want to start with Mr. Samino, because it was he that requested the agenda.
I requested the agenda item at the behest of at least two citizens who reached out to me insofar as their belief is that the Public Works Planning Board is deficient in either its purview or its performance or both. And I think I was specifically, the chair of, the former chair of the planning board was also contacted back in the spring. And Mr. Bollin is my appointment. Mr. Bollin happens to be chair, but I, I appoint three members. I don't appoint the chair, but as it happens, one of my appointees is the chair. I would only disagree with one thing. I think you summarized that very well, Ms. Cook. The, the, the Public Works Planning Board, as you, as you said, under the special act, exists to advise the board of selectmen. No, it doesn't say what advice, how often. It doesn't specify much of anything in there. However, I presume that means you are, it is your purview as a board to determine whether you want or need or are getting the right kind and the right amount of advice. One thing I think we can all agree on is that it is not in the purview of the Public Works Planning Board to supervise or oversee or otherwise have a sort of managerial role over the Department of Public Works. And I think that's been implied in some of the communications I've received. Section one of the same special act is that there is hereby established a Department of Public Works here and after called the Department, which shall be under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen today, Select Board. So I think whether the Public Works Planning Board is quote unquote doing its job today has to be viewed through these lenses that I've just been describing. Under Mr. Bollin's chairmanship, and I'll let him speak to it in more detail, the Public Works Planning Board has not, has not acted without independently, without a specific request here or there from this board. Yeah, I personally don't feel like that is at odds with the, you know, the, the, the special act. You might have a different chair or a different composition of the Public Works Planning Board that might choose to be more independent or might choose to find its own reasons to meet and deliberate and advise. But I don't know that there's any one correct way based on, as you say, the limited guidance that the special act provides. When this was first raised back in the spring, both myself and former chair of the planning board, Mr. Morris, communicated with the citizens who raised the issue that their concerns were best addressed to the Select Board. I don't know to what extent they attempted to do that. But when it came back around a few weeks ago, in my mind, I said, okay, you know, enough's enough. Let's just get it front of the Select Board. And so that's why I called you, Kathy. At this point, I'll, I'll yield to Mr. Bollin.
So what would you like to know?
What do you think we should do tonight to try to end up with some more meat on the bones as far as what this board should do? What do you recommend that? So if you, I mean, you said it, you seem for 90 years, right? So what, what do you think we should do to try to end up with a situation where we've got a board that functions as this one sentence says it should?
Well, when asked previously by several iterations of the board to investigate things, report back their findings to the selectmen, the board has always done such. At times, as you referred to, we were both on Capitol before. We investigated something and reported back, working with the current superintendent at the time, most recently Ms. Gallagher. Sometimes people got frustrated when we were asked for the third time to look at the transfer station to respond. Yeah, we did, and nothing's changed. So, you know, we'll look again. And they found that nothing had changed and reported back as such. And the board over time left some valuable, lost some valuable members because they just said, are you just looking for us to change our answer? Tell us it's your decision, you know, we've reported back. If you don't agree with us, that's fine, but, you know, there are other things we can look at, if you like, but the same thing over and over. Some people left the board because of that, because they didn't feel that, you know, it was, their time was, they felt their time was wasted. So over time, initially, when the board was established, there were many meetings because the purpose of the board at that time was to bring at least four elected boards under one roof, which wasn't easy. You had an elected Board of Water Commissioners that wanted their things covered. You had an elected Board of Cemetery Commissioners that wanted their things included. You had the selectmen with the Highway Commissioners. You had the tree ward. So there were many, there was, there was a lot of work and study and bringing people together to get this to fly, if you will, to get the DPW and hopefully save the town some money by not having all these different departments. And I, and I believe it has. In time, as that went away and everything was established and working well, the emphasis went a little more toward what projects do we have that we'd like a little more advice on? Whether coming from the DPW superintendent, who was a very open channel of communication. And she said, you know, I'd like you guys to look at, or maybe it came from the, you know, our complete streets policy. So we studied the complete streets policy and came up with some recommendations. And in the end, that you passed our, our recommendations on that. Again, we've looked at, you know, knowing that at some point the transfer station may fail or the recycle center might need to do other things. And we've looked at that. But we have not gone out and searched for, trying to find a solution to something we didn't think we broke.
Were every one of those cases where you did that research, where you asked specifically by the select board to do that? Or you decided to do that?
Not necessarily. The superintendent might have had, you know, to come up with something on complete streets or some other projects and requested that, you know, our, our help and, you know, looking at that. Or even just at different times in budgetary things, you know, what, a sounding board for her to say, you know, is, are we doing these things right, whatever else? And sometimes we, you know, give some feedback that, you know, in our opinion, look at this, you know, voted on by our board, not necessarily coming from the select. But again, we work very closely with her and had a very good relationship. And we had a lot of confidence in her because, I mean, it was just obvious that we felt, for the most part, she was, you know, one of the most effective department heads that we had in town. She consistently came in with budgets that, you know, sometimes we felt, you know, maybe you're cheating yourself on these things, but it's, but it's your department and you work with the selectmen. So we, we've, we've looked at things like that. And again, we had a lot of confidence in her, in her abilities, in the consultants and engineers that she hired. That very rarely were we, you know, no one was out to second guess her. If the selectmen wanted us to look at something, if she wanted us to look at something. So she felt confident in what she was presenting to ultimately the selectmen or the town meeting. Then, then we would weigh in on that. It became a little more tedious with going to us to talk about something and then to the new Capitol to talk about the same thing, and then to advisory to talk about the same thing, and then to the selectmen to talk about the same thing. During pandemic, you know, none of the regular previous members on our board were crazy about talking to each other over a computer. We preferred to meet in person. That was not loud or whatever, but at several, so, so we didn't meet unless it was felt, you know, we need to get together, meet and come up with some ideas on these things. There was a proposal at one point to get more, for the board to get more involved and look at some other things, even though they weren't being requested or whatever else. And the board voted for and one that we were not in favor of expanding our role. We felt that, you know, we were very comfortable with what we were doing. And, you know, we didn't want to open warnings that we weren't being asked to look at. Because in the end, it didn't come down to our decision. Recently, you know, we were asked to look at two issues, portable road and water connection.
Who asked you to look at portable roads specifically?
The DPW superintendent to give an opinion on that. But then, you know, was asked that we have joint meetings with Capitol to do such. So we agreed to do that. And the first one, on a technicality, at, at the end, because the Capitol chairman said, we don't really have time for you to have a meeting within our meeting. So we posted it as meeting at their meeting, you know, basically nothing was our lead or that, whatever, we were following them, asking questions, whatever else. In, in order to, you know, we were posted as, I think, meeting with them. And that seemed to go well. There was, you know, waiting for information for further meetings. When the meantime, Mr. Butler was asked to look at the situation and stuff. And both committees kind of looked, well, okay, what are we doing now? You know, we don't know. We didn't even know that Mr. Butler was making a presentation to your board until I happened to be, you know, catching up on emails and looking at stuff that night at the meeting. So geez, you know, they want us to look at this, but we weren't even notified that this was going to happen in a meeting. So where are we going from here? Then in a recent conversation with you and Ms. Cook, you know, and said, well, it was decided Capitol wasn't going to be involved anymore because it might not be a Capitol item. Didn't necessarily make sense to me because if it became a Capitol item, then they were going to have to rehash the whole thing again. But, okay, so I reached out looking for, or I think even before that, I reached out and said, okay, there's some information on complete streets coming in. Like to see if we can meet on a date that was going to be a meeting of Capitol. And several people responded. Cyrus was one, and several did not. In the meantime.
So you reached out to your five-member board and only Mr. Cyrus responded?
No, because he's in front of me, and I know Mr. Cyrus responded, and I can say he responded. The others that responded, I'm not sure, but not, not everyone responded. So we waited on that. Then in the meantime, I jumped the gun a little. You said, well, Capitol's not going to be involved anymore. But we would like you to continue on and look at. However, the Board of Selectmen is going to be looking at this too. So the thought process, well, now what are we doing? Because let's go back to, oh, we, we decided this in early Capitol Committee. And, oh, no, we're not going to, we're not going to do that with her. So there's, there's not much of an appetite from some of the longer-term members of the board to do something only to be told, yeah, well, we've decided we're not going to do that before we even get a report from you.
So Bill, based on all this, do you believe that the P W P P should exist?
I, I, I think that's still to be determined. Right now it is. And we're moving into a transition for the head of the DPW. So, I mean, at, at one time I said, this board has, this board should have had a sunset clause. You know, once everything was known to be established and the DPW was working fine, why have a second guest board, which for a lot of people, that's what this board has become. But I do believe when the selectmen need something studied and they're not going to do it themselves or appoint another committee because we seem to have a committee to decide if we should have a meeting. We've, we've always been more than willing to, to meet. We were going to meet on complete streets. Then with the decision of the DPW superintendent to resign, that was put off because we're going to need more information and bring the other person. So we're fully ready to meet on that when the time comes. But as, you know, in, in response to an earlier email, we, you know, we don't, we're not going to be the tree wardens. We're not going to do tree hearings. There are statutory committees or boards with that responsibility. There are statutory committees or boards with that responsibility. You know, and so, and I can say that without meeting because it was a vote of the board. They didn't want to take on any additional responsibility. So if the board of selectmen feel that this is still a valuable board and we can continue, um, then absolutely, I believe it should still be there. But a- again, everyone understanding we're not an oversight board. You know, and people have gotten on this committee over the years pretty much with one specific agenda and that was to, you know, get back at the DPW superintendent because they felt they were wrong with a decision that she made. And that's, you know, you, you had at least three members, four members on the board that did not agree with that one percent. You know, it, it wasn't, we had no oversight whatsoever and any vote that we took really me- meant nothing other than her potentially changing her mind on a presentation to the selectman or the selectman agreeing with us. So is it time to propose legislation to do away with it? Quite, quite possible. I mean, it, you know, we, we have some boards for, you know, youth and family services and, and other things. But we don't have probably more important boards that some other towns have, like a public safety oversight committee. And I would say that might be more important in, in some kind of oversight. But I don't believe in those either. You know, I, I believe, and I know some of my fellow board members over the years believe that people should be allowed to do their jobs. They get paid very well. They have, you know, excellent employees. Let them do their job. And if there's something that needs to be done, and again, I think we've contributed quite a bit over the years, even, even before I was on the board. But, you know, i- if somebody's upset that a tree was cut down in their neighborhood that shouldn't have been cut down. I mean, this town goes crazy for trees. That, that became, all of a sudden, that became a big issue and something that people wanted to blame on us that we're not telling her she can't cut down trees. Yet.
I don't want to get into the trees.
Well.
So um, let's, let's.
So, so I, I, I think that's basically up to the selectmen to start with. I mean, i- i- in my opinion, like, you know, I've, I've spoken to you, I've spoken to Mr. Semino, I've spoken to Mr. Purple. And as far as Hopkinton, you know, one of our issues right now, it seems like at this point, the selectmen tend to agree that this would be a good thing to do. So comes down to your decision. So if you've already agreed to that and what really needs to be done now is the legalese of figuring out that contract. If you want us to help you with that, maybe you should direct us to just look at, you know, help, helping come up with certain things that we should be looking for in that. But again, it's, it's executive stack session stuff that I think you folks have already looked at. He- hearings for Cordible Road is, is, is now postponed. We'll, we'll do what you feel is within our purview. And as I say, you know, we've done a lot that, you know, maybe you haven't been aware, working with Ms. Galligan to it, help her figure out how she wants to go forward with some things. I mean, we, we've, we've been a sound sounding board. We have not been a second guessing board. And, you know, there is, there are some people that want us to be that. And, you know, I think you'd have to re, you know.
The sounding board, sounding board side, that's going to see those.
What's that?
We can always modify the, you can get rid of it, try to get rid of it, you can also modify too, but that sounding board job is not in the it's simply said to advise selectmen. Okay, so um, you might want to start as far as trying to help the others well, um, so that after tonight we can go forward and understand how many people use the function.
I probably have the briefest comments. So I think there's a tremendous value in the public works planning board. I think we probably underutilize them over time. I would like them to continue. And I still think there's value in them looking at Hopkinton. And maybe not till we get a little further in the negotiation maybe, but I think there's a lot of work that's going to be done and we're not even sure what's going to be required, what roads are going to be torn up. And I think there's a tremendous value in the public planning board being involved in that. So with that specific project, so that's.
Okay, so specifically what you're saying is we want to, we want them to continue, okay? And we agree that what we've got to do on board is to overtly, so listen, just advice on specific part. I'm not trying to put words to your mouth. I'm trying to end up with a, you know,
No.
Something in the record that this is what we're going to do. So one word, we will overtly ask the PW PB for the advice that we want on whatever project it is. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. And I think that in, in the past, you know, I don't know that the board had a clear understanding that that was the intent that we had to ask. So um, knowing now, as we're having this discussion, I think there's a tremendous value in that we should utilize them.
If we sit on their chairs, um, you wouldn't expect them to meet unless we guys do something, right? They need someone, you guys need to do something and they come back with that advice. And obviously if we ask for advice, we will um, something, listen to the advice, right? So.
That's my quick answer.
Okay, great. Who wants to go next?
So I think we're entering a period of transition here. So I, I think um there's a great value in the historical knowledge from that board to help onboarding a new DPW superintendent um and being able to give advice um as that person gets up to speed.
Advice to that person?
Yes.
That's what this says. It says that we ask them for advice to us. So.
But it sounds like that they have on their own that if a, if a superintendent asks them, they're giving. So I think.
I actually think it's better to give the page of that, but it just didn't say that here.
Well, and, and the rationale behind that is the DPW superintendent is reporting this information to the select. You know, it's, it's not something that, you know, it's, it's going forward to you, whatever, whatever it is. So to help her with that in, in that roundabout way, we are advising the selectmen through, you know, listening to her proposals and helping her try and streamline whatever. There might not be um, a direct report to you on it. O- other than coming to a meeting to support her, which we, which we've done over the years and knowing to advise me whatever else.
Yeah. And, and I think it may, it may look different too. There's, I mean, a lot of projects that are ongoing that this person's going to have to pick up that they don't necessarily own from the beginning, right? So the advice that is sought may look different than what you've seen over the last ten years, right? So I, I do think for at least the way I would hope that we would continue over the next six months to a year is that that would be a primary role of what the public works planning board would have. Um, I completely appreciate um you though doing work and not being heard or us not utilizing um that. So I, I just think then if we're going to request public works planning board to look at something that we're thoughtful in what that is and that if there is another like capital or if there is some capital component that we just make sure that we, that they're working together on that or that we, you know, are clear on the direction of one versus the other. Um, so I'm not sure that I'm answering your question, but those are kind of my thoughts on um, you know, being able to utilize, utilize them and give the new TPW superintendent a resource um outside of coming to town, whatever.
I don't think that PW PB is necessarily just a capital in the capital management. Capital is supposed to take the requests from the various departments, massage them, put them on the plans, but they don't go and tell someone what to do. They're looking for, yes, departments more, right? So someone's got to tell them to put the stuff on the capital plan. So Karen's been doing it, right? Uh, but it doesn't mean PW PB can't get part of the process to get it on to the capital plan that then gives that right capital where they're looking at the overall plan for the town, whether it fits whatever. So I don't think that those two are um um, each exclusive. I actually think they, they would find someone's got to get it on the thing.
Right, right. And they're, they should be the ones that are advocating to get, and then capital, it's capital's job to vet it, right? Um, one other comment on the, on the Hopkinton water. Um, I don't know that I would go so far and say that this board is committed to, to doing it yet. I think uh, the last time that we had a conversation, at least my intent was that public works planning board will be providing a public forum so that our public comment, uh, we got a lot of great feedback from the public when we um discussed it. And I think just wanting to give as much opportunity to the public to be able to speak. And so I think from my perspective, I was hoping that you would be able to at least give that feedback back to us um so that we understand where the questions are coming from, things that we had thought of. Um, and, you know, making it more transparent.
And having Mr. Butler do his proposal at that meeting as well.
I agree with that request.
When, when you have John look into something, you know, he's done stuff with DPW on, on water and other things. And he's very helpful in numbers and, and figuring that stuff out. Nobody really told us, see.
That's not right now.
Where we just.
We asked you to please. So you were, this was a request that I made because I got asked, we voted and I made a request that you hold a public forum, ask Mr. Butler so the public can ask more questions as far as that process. So that's what I asked you to do.
Hold a public forum with Mr. Butler?
And ask Mr. Butler to come in.
Sorry, I don't, I, you know, we, we talked about going forward, but I, we saw nothing about asking Mr. Butler. He's made his presentation, but we're certainly willing to. I mean, again, what we look to try and do is avoid duplication. Nobody wants to go to meeting after meeting after meeting to discuss the same thing. You know, if there's, a- and I think it should be considered, i- if, if we do initial meetings, whatever else with public comment, whatever, um, and then we can present that. But that probably is just going to be coming up at any other meeting on the same thing. And, and maybe it does, those questions don't come up anymore because we presented it. But I mean, some, for some department heads to sit at, you know, meetings before different boards and hear the same questions over and over again. I thought, I, I value their time.
Okay, I think we're making progress here. So let's keep going. Uh, okay, so come back for it. Sam?
Um, yeah. I guess I, I can definitely, the public work planning board could and should play an important role going forward. And to Chelsea's point, maybe one of the things that we need to be more explicit for is to answer with a standing request of PW PB to act as a resource for the DPW superintendent. Explicitly, that's been de facto, I think, what's been going on. Superintendent had a question or had a, a problem that she wanted advice about, she would ask the PW PB and respond. So making that explicit seems to be helpful. But just to um, to clarify a point, Mr. Bullen, are you saying that if the select board came to public work planning with a, a question or a list of questions and said, please look into this, you're prepared to?
It's, it's, it's what we've done in the past. And I mean, again, you know, our, our, our position is um should this request go right to the superintendent? You know, and, and make sure they're looking at it before we just. I mean, we, we, so, uh, some of our people have varying experience in public works and construction and everything else. So we provide um, you know, a, a good knowledge base for some of these things. But I think some of the discussion should be maybe directly between the select board or the town administrator and the DPW superintendent. I mean, you know, I, I don't think we should be looking at anything that is a surprise to the DPW superintendent and they say, why didn't they ask me about this? I mean, this, I hate to say it, I'm not saying your book, this town is full of that. You know, pe- people get blindsided by different things, so.
And I'm not suggesting anything different there. I think that in this case, uh, you know, the superintendent has been deeply involved in water projects, for example, to Miss Cook's point. I think there may be some redundancy in terms of additional public meetings. On the other hand, I continue to get a lot of questions from the public about what's going on here and why are we doing this, et cetera. So I think that I mean, I'm personally prepared to accept a redundancy to over communicate we need to about this to hopefully, but bring people up to speed. This may come to town meeting at some point. It'd be great to have the public informed about that to, to surprise there. So. But to go back to one of your earlier comments, I guess I've not had since as a PW PB member of the last several years, that the board is eager to uh, manage GPW. I think it's been clear, at least in my mind, and uh, we are again advising to the select board and make recommendations. But certainly you have no line authority to make decisions for anybody about anything.
And, and, and I would say the previous board for the most part felt that way. There, there had this.
Previous to you, previous to me, um, previous to the, so the most recent appointment.
Okay. I can tell you that at previous times, there were people that um got on the board that specifically added agenda because of something that happened and wanted, wanted to rehearse things that were done, whatever else. And hopefully we're past that now, but. A- a- again, hopefully, you, you know how boards are.
Yep.
People are wrong, then they want to get on a board and make sure
Yep.
no one else is wrong.
But again, we, we've had conversations here about possible uh, questions with PW PB. And I guess my hope is that we can actually define that list and come up with some specific questions that the board can be helpful on. Uh, I agree that uh, the superintendent needs to be in the loop on that. One of the values of the board, I think, as you suggested, is that there are different sets of experience there. So that may, again, highlight different issues or help not only the select board and others make better decisions about that. So I don't as any board, any advisory board, you know, I come up with the ideas and that's worth the effort to do that.
That's, that's why we've, we've always had a, a very healthy level of discussion with her. She always felt comfortable in coming to us and, and, and asking things and sometimes something would come up that she's, no, you know, that, that makes sense.
Yep. I tentatively, for example, we have hard money for sidewalks. Capital has weighed in on that. I think that's another one. PW PB might have some useful insight for them. So another check and balance in that process.
I think this is, to Chelsea's point, this is kind of an important time where we're having, and we hire a new DPW superintendent. I think Hopkinton is one issue where there, there's a, there's a, it's a such an important decision that I agree with, with Sam that there's a little bit of redundancy here. Public comment, that's okay. So that's something where because it's already in process, you know, I think there's at the right time role for further input from the public work planning board, but I would suggest until we have a new DPW superintendent, maybe the best thing to do is to just hold off until any further kind of assignments to the public works planning board until we can all kind of get on the same page and also get some input from the new person that we hire about how would that person like to view the PWP as a resource? I definitely, one thing I have in mind is from a prior conversation I had with Ms. Galligan is the frustration about getting to a point where a major project now has to go through four boards. Select board, advisory committee, cabinet committee and public, it's just too much. And, you know, also just being frank, I think that it's this public works planning board is kind of a strange creature and understand more about, more about it. It's not, it's not by accident that was created at this particular time. It was created in connection with merging all these. It seems totally arcane, you know, like one of the weird facts that we uh, learned is why are we, the select board is the tree board, right? Uh, that's somewhere in the special act. Uh, that doesn't really make a lot of sense. Uh, so we're at the point really where I don't know that though, except that we're creating tasks for this board, which is though, except that we're creating tasks for this board, which is just, it's a little bit of a historical relic. And I don't mean that with any sign of disrespect.
There is no disrespect. And we're not, we're not the only board that's like that from some days.
There's probably more dinosaurs.
Yeah. The industrial relations boards and other things. I mean, we have things on.
We want to have, once we have a new GPW Superintendent, we want it, let's all get on the same page. Listen to this person and hear have a discussion, okay, what are a couple new interesting things that that person is interested in working on, and then having the PWPB help that person. We have an opportunity for a good kind of fresh start, and I concerned that if we kind of give the PWPB in the next four months or so, a lot of, you know, homework assignments, then it's just gonna confuse the the new GPW Superintendent. Let's wait till that person comes on board and then have kind of an introductory meeting and think really carefully about how in light of the new hire, the PWP can be kind of a resource both for the Select Board and for the new Superintendent.
First, I don't think you want your new hire coming in and saying, who do I really work?
Yes, that's my concern.
I think you want clear that, you know, this person reports to the Board of Selectmen, to the Town Administrator. They don't report to the Planning Board, they don't report to the Public Works Planning Board, they don't report to the ZBA or anything else. And we can certainly, and I think we're very willing to help them understand where things came from and other things under your guidance.
That's not to say, though, that there can be, there are ideas, which members of your board might have that are good ideas, that that we just need a little bit of pressure to think about it and kind of advance it up on the agenda.
You have a question. So are you suggesting that the Public Works Planning Board not start any forms of discussions on Hopkin Town?
No, I'm not suggesting that. That's why I tried to carve that out. That's something that's already in process, and I am just a little confused on where we are on Hopkin Town now. I thought we were gonna talk about it tonight.
Next week.
Next week?
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow's dispatch.
Monday, Monday is.
I just wanted to be clear, you did, that Hopkin Town is still on the table for Public Works Planning.
So to be clear, Mr. Boland, you met at Starbucks, and I said the board asked me to ask you to hold a meeting in public forum to basically allow the public to talk again at that Hopkin Town question, but I did say, please, Mr. Boland.
Yeah, I thought you were looking for a presentation, you said you were looking for a presentation for this, but my understanding was he made one.
Okay, well, okay, so let me make clear what I was asked to do, which is, would you please convene a meeting with PWPB and ask Mr. Butler to come so we can make the same presentation again that you gave to us, right? And allow the public to comment, so again, the public has a chance to weigh in on the project. Now, the meeting on the 21st is also gonna be public too, so listen to that. But that's what I was asked to ask you, so if I didn't make it clear, I'm trying to make it clear right now.
The 21st meeting is what?
The Select Board has a meeting on the 21st to go to the next step as far as Hopkin Town does, and this, now, Naski's right. All we've done is said so far, we want to go to the next step, and trying to see if we can put together a deal that we think is soundable to the Town South Board. Fairable to the Town South Board that still will allow Hopkin Town to solve the water problem. Okay, I don't want to spend so much time talking about it. So it looks to me like we.
There's one more housekeeping element here in terms of the recent scrutiny, and Mr. Boland is aware of this. Over the past three to four meetings that they have had, going back before COVID, no minutes have been posted. And folks have raised that to my attention as well, I raised it to Mr. Boland's attention, I don't know if he wants to speak to that, I know he intends to rectify that, but I want to make sure that that is on the record tonight as well because it was raised to me. I think, I think you're trying to within, with possibly one exception. Draft minutes were always posted. Now, maybe they didn't come through as technically accepted, and they might have been, but that didn't get updated on the record. But we've always tried, you know, we had, we had a very good secretary who unfortunately is no longer on the board. So trying to work with her and through my notes, and everything was on Zoom. They, you know, during the pandemic, the we were out there.
We still got each other's posts, so we got all, so we on the way. Okay, I don't want to lose this train because I think we still accomplish some things with this, so can we at least memorialize the discussion? Maybe we freeze it for Andrew's discussion, but I do think what Chelsea said as far as having a standing request to basically act as a sounding board for the DPW Supervisor. And having regular meetings to be that sounding board so that you literally call regular meets to do that meeting, have the person come, make sure that everything, just like you think in services, that they listen to, that's what they do, they're a sounding board. You know, they're supervisor, that they're a sounding board, but we want regular meetings to be able to act as that sounding board. So that's number one. Number two, Select Board will specifically ask, make requests for specific projects. We want you to advise us on that, whatever, we'll be very specific, that's what we want you to do. But that'd be the second tier of what we ask you to do. That sounds to me like every small thing, a big job, once we get, if we breathe with Andrews, essentially, we get the the new person hired, he or she, okay, discusses with them, okay, so they're on board with this, and then finalize this so that we really think we've got a plan to go forward to make this functionally. I'm looking at you same direction on, so.
That sounds good to me.
And just so you know, as the chairman, I have had plenty of discussions with the Superintendent over the years on, are there some things we need to be looking at for you, you know, should we convene a meeting, whatever else? So.
We're talking regular, you know, once a month, whatever, where, you know, the sounding board has been public.
I, I'm not gonna agree with once a month, that we should have once a month meetings. Because there just is not that much as if we were a planning board, historic society.
I've got the list of stuff she's got going on right now, it's a huge list. So I don't see how you can say there's not, I was gonna talk about, she's got more going on than any department in this town, probably, besides maybe the schools. So I can't believe you can't have a regular meeting where there's just a robust discussion about all kinds of projects. I think it's a monkey bust.
So just to that.
I know it's.
I still think even that, you should just hold on for a second. Because for the sounding board, it's you know, the DPW Superintendent is hired by the Select Board, and that's where the reporting line should be. I think let's take it slow and think carefully about having a way that this sounding board kind of concept can be really, you know, helpful and productive to the next Superintendent. I just think it's so important to first get through every person and really really communicate to that person, we want you to be successful, we're gonna help you be successful, and how can we put in place a structure?
It's fine, but I would say, okay, after your meeting on, it was just Monday, did we figure that out?
Yep.
You know, if I can, I'll come and see if any board members want to come, so we know where we're going, and
As to me.
where you want us to go from there, if you've made some decisions or other things that we find, and we'll post a meeting after after that meeting, because at last, you know, we were waiting for the next bunch of information on.
Said executive or?
Perfect, just by the desk, so I'm gonna say, call a meeting if you're there, Sam, so we won, we should have got one more time.
Well.
As to me, so everybody's just a customer, so.
Maybe, maybe just watch.
Well. Okay, so we agreed, we're gonna table this for a moment, but we're gonna basically remember what we said tonight in a minute, right? As far as where we may go with this, we'll have to give the meeting to the Superintendent.
Thank you very much.
So, Marnie's coming up here to this, we've got a public comment.
Oh, yes.
Hi, thank you for taking public comment on this, this is Marnie Houlihan, 26 Clifford Road. I just wanted, I heard this discussion, just perspective. Ms. Cook, thank you for bringing this to the Select Board. I think what's very important and imperative here is that the reason why there's public scrutiny, we've all talked about it, is that we've been challenged as an organization, as a town in the way that things are managed. And so I think we need to actually find a chair that will be proactive. I think a proactive chair, much like you've demonstrated, Ms. Cook, is someone that who is able to take a list on to proactively manage it, to set agendas, to move forward and progress discussion. Happens in corporate America every day, I'm not sure how we can't do this as a town and kind of work proactively. A specific point to Mr. Dennington, I'd ask you to listen to your constituents, you are in elected position. There's been challenges in this town. We need this Public Work Planning Board perhaps to reevaluate the charter. I don't want to table it, I don't think that's healthy for this town. I don't think we hire somebody and let an employee decide who's never been in the town, how to operate. Some of your suggestions I just don't think are palatable for people in the public citizens realm. So I think what we, I would highly recommend, I appreciate that this is a topic of discussion. I think we have to seriously evaluate if Mr. Boland's the appropriate chair for this. We need someone who will proactively and help manage our town through this difficult situation that we're in. I was pleased that someone, you know, Ms. Gallagher saw the writing on the wall, and that's a very productive thing for this town, while it's creating chaos to replace her. I think it's a very productive decision that she's made, and I think that we as citizens are appreciative that she's done that. Now that we have that in place, we need to now figure out what are the roles and responsibilities? What is the charter? How do we use these different boards? Not just Public Work Planning Board, but other boards to make decisions palatable and to make sure that things can be done in a way that's documented. Mr. Boland, you've been told multiple times that you have not posted meeting minutes. It's, you shrug your shoulders, we watch you on these meetings, it's just, it's just not the right thing to do. It is available on Zoom, but minutes are maybe easier for people to access, and you've had well over three years to post them. There are just basic stipulations that I think a chair needs to do in this position, and Select Board needs to really think about this, and Mr. Semino, as a moderator, I'd like you to really understand is he the right person to chair a board where we are trying to work through a tumultuous time? Thank you for allowing my comments.
Folks, I just want to repeat what I said earlier, I don't know, Ms. Houlihan, I don't appoint the chair, I happen to appoint Mr. Boland. The board elects its own chair. So I, I don't, I don't have, I don't have the magic wand on that specifically.
So if I may comment, it, it, it sounds like a little victory dance is being done, that Ms. Gallagher was driven from town.
I wouldn't characterize what she says there.
Well, I heard a comment that she's, you know, stepped up and done the right thing, whatever else. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just reiterate, in my experience with this town government, which has been varied, no one in their department has more respect from their employees than Karen Gallagher. No one has worked harder at keeping her budget at levels sometimes deemed to be possibly too low because she was concerned about the taxpayers in this town. And I think she has gotten a raw deal from several citizens in this town. And if you're happy that she has resigned now, great, what are you gonna do with the next person? Right away, try to put restrictions on them? They have a job, the police chief has a job. These people need support, and if someone feels they were wrong because a tree was cut down, or they painted a line down the wrong road, or something else, then I'm gonna say that the Select Board or another board has to stand up and say, we support our department head, thank you for your concerns, but we feel they're doing a good job.
Okay, but that's not the topic tonight, so we appreciate that.
Well, that's what just came up as far as I.
Let me make another suggestion too, you know, a, you know, good governance requires committees to meet and elect new officers on a regular basis, so why don't you hold a meeting so the five of you get together so you can talk? Give people a chance to talk, and if they want to let new officers, do that too, so that everybody feels like they are part, I mean, I know that at least two people don't feel like they've got any whiteness, you know, because we don't meet, and they don't have, they're minority, and their voices aren't heard. So why don't you just have a meeting and have everybody have a chance to talk? And possibly elect new officers to see who, as a whole, wants to run the committee. That would be helpful.
That's fine, and as I mentioned before, I put out to have a meeting this past month, and Mr. Stivers and two other people on the board responded. Someone who was unhappy did not respond.
Well, I can't help that, we had a forum, so.
Why don't we move on, and I've heard what you folks have said, and look forward to your Monday meeting and go from there. And hopefully, if the board meets and we're of the same feeling as we voted a year or two ago, that will be respected by other people on the board.
So me, by the.
Thank you.
Okay, this is coming, will be.
Any other comments?
Is there another?
Excuse me, there's no comment. Oh, sorry. You gotta come up.
After the table?
So, Mr. Semino and Mr. Boland, thank you very much.
I'm wondering, first of all, sit down for us and introduce yourself. I'm wondering, Church of Fiore. I'm supposed to say my address? 10 Menor Street, Saturday. I'm wondering if now that the primary discussion is over, if Mr. Maria wants to let back in for public comment. I know she was very interested in this topic.
Once we have truly discussed the topic and put it to you, then we will come back in and she can speak at the end of the conversation.
So, okay. I want to read to you, to read into the record, first of all, a letter that I sent to Mr. Boland and the Public Works Planning Board on October 18th. And then I have a couple comments. Mr. Boland, I'm writing to you in regard to minutes from Public PWPB meetings. According to the board's website on the town site, no final minutes have been filed with the Clerk's Office since 4/29/2019. Incidentally, this is also the meeting where you and Mr. Boland were made chair. There have also only been four meetings called since that date 41 months ago. Considering the problematic issues this town has encountered with the Department of Public Works as well as large-scale projects this department is currently undertaking and planning, this appears to be an egregious lack of concern or insight on the part of this board. The Clerk's Office has sent a request for minutes for the most recent meetings, 1/27/21 and 7/18/22, but none have been posted to date. This appears to be in violation of both Massachusetts Open Meeting Law and Massachusetts Public Records Law. Please consider this a formal request to provide and make public final meeting minutes for PWPB meetings on the following dates, 7/18/2022, 1/27/21, 6/11/2020, 1/27/2020. Thank you, I look forward to reply. As I said, that was sent on 10/18. I've yet to receive a response. I am under the understanding that I should have received a response within 10 days. This will be filed as a violation request with the state. It's great if some of these meetings were on Zoom, as far as I know, that does not fulfill the state requirements. The reason I got involved in some of this was because, as you know, in the spring, I'm sorry, I'm really forced today, in the spring I had a petition on town meeting seeking oversight of. I had a situs petition on town meeting seeking oversight of the Public Works Department. I think that we've all recognized issues over the last couple of years that many people in this town, and I would hope including some of you, feel were not handled in their best. Given the oversight and authority that our current DPW supervisor has, I felt and do feel that this town needs to establish more significant oversight over that position in that department. I would like that taken into consideration when you move forward with hiring a new person. But that is how I became interested in what the Public Works Planning Board was doing because I was assured by some people at the time that if this was taken off the agenda, that oversight would happen for the Department of Public Works. It was then told to me that there was a board already in place to provide that oversight. I guess I am now learning that that is not a position of that board to provide oversight only to answer questions. Maybe the charge the board needs to be examined. Maybe there needs to be another way to provide oversight to the Department of Public Works. But I do think something needs to happen. And if the current members of the Public Works Planning Board are not interested in meeting, are not interested in fulfilling their charge, and have no respect for the questions that the Select Board may ask, and would only give you answers in response to support of the Department of Public Works Supervisor, I think it is time for those people to move on. If you don't want to have regular meetings, if you don't want to create meeting minutes according to state law, there's an easy way to resolve that, and that is to resign the position on the board. Thank you.
All right, advisory committee, we're gonna move up. So Brian, you're willing to wait?
Yes, yes.
Okay, apparently advisory is gonna lose.
Sorry.
I have more questions.
Yes.
Where was this letter sent? Because I never received that.
It was sent on October 18 to, let's say, B. Boland at South Row and Makeup Home, and to the other members of the Public Works Planning Board, Mr. Stivers, I can't recede it. I also sent it to Mr. Semino and the town clerk. So Patty, can you send him to go with another one? Okay, is there a different address I should use other than B. Boland at South Row?
Whatever.
So I'll turn you here.
I can't pull my address there, but it comes to me.
It was so short. It was so short.
But I checked it. I'll look for it. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. All right. So who do we have on Zoom?
Adam.
Marcy.
Marcy's there.
Marcy, yeah.
Tim, Mark, Tim.
So we've got Marcy and Adam.
And Tim.
Yeah, all right, so almost everybody. So you're missing Eric. Hello, Mr. Rose, this is your first.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Okay, so the goals of tonight's joint meeting with advisory are broadly two things: to agree on the budget process for fiscal year '23, and to agree on the date for the January 21 meeting between Select Board, Advisory, and certain departments that we are going to pick. And as for the process, the following has previously generally discussed and included that consisted of the Finance Director, Mr. Valentine, Carl, were you there that day? Sorry, so and Town Account Carla, Carla, and Town Administrator, Mr. Purple, Advisory Chair, Mr. Fahd, and Select Board Chair and Vice Chair, Ms. Cook, and Ms. Millen. So in an explicit effort to make the process more efficient and effective this year, the proposal from this board was to have one joint meeting on either, in January, so I've, I'm gonna fill out two dates that I think are the best two, and I'm taking my second. So I'm gonna say either January 21st or January 20th, it's a Saturday, both Saturdays. This is past March 15th weekend. That's the 16th, so that's previous weekend, so avoid that. To discuss the fiscal year '24 proposed budget as recommended by advisory. Advisory will have substantially completed its detailed budget work by that date, and will present their initial recommended budget to the Select Board. Any department whose budget Select Board would like to discuss directly with that department will also be invited that day. Select Board will discuss any issues with proposed budget with advisory that day. Select Board and Advisory will have a second joint meeting whose purpose would be to resolve any remaining disagreements over the fiscal year '24 proposed budget that Advisory is required to recommend to town meeting. The goal of the second joint meeting will be to attempt to resolve any differences that the budget printed in the warrant is one that Advisory tends to recommend to town meeting for approval. Currently, all departments have received from Brian fiscal year '24 budget templates that include their actual expenditures of fiscal year '22 and their fiscal year '23 budgets. Departments have been asked to return their preliminary budget request by noon on Monday, November 28. So far, there have been no parameters placed on those budgets of fiscal year '24. Tonight, we need to decide what parameters, if any, we need, we want to place on the budget request, including staff hours, so that Brian can relay that information to the department staff. Personnel, the personnel board will meet this Thursday and vote on a recommended salary increase for fiscal year '24 for the 50 or so SAP employees. Of course, the rest of us, including the Department, this is what we have control. Brian will relay that info to the departments for their incorporation into their fiscal year budget request. We will have a joint meeting on 12/20 with Capital and Advisory. At that meeting, Capital will present their recommendations for the capital budget for fiscal year '24. We also expect the Regional School Committee to make a presentation on their plans for improved athletic facilities at Albonlet that same night. Assistant Spelly will be invited to give us his preliminary protection of the year-over-year increases in town property, including single-family homes. Mr. Valentine and Advisory will also present their first pass at the proposed fiscal year '24 budget using the parameters that we set tonight. They will also have the option of showing alternative budgets that could include other department requests. After we hear the presentations on the 20th, Select Board will then determine that night the departments they want to meet with on either the 21st or 20th. That gives departments almost a month to get ready. Okay, so since tonight, this is what I think we need to do, decide on. The date for that meeting, 21st or 28th, I picked another one, I think that those don't work. And then the parameters, more importantly, the parameters for the budget prep, including the ability to add, everybody hear me, add new hours, whether that means a new position or the addition of hours to an existing part-time position. We've gotten, I think we've received two budgets so far, and the first one has a full-time position and it's on a part-time. So we already got one back that's trying to do that, right? So if we decide to limit the ability of any department to add any new hours, positions, et cetera, do we also want to allow departments to submit an alternative budget that reflects additional hours where there is a strong belief that additional hours are crucial to that department's ability to function effectively? So that's a question to everybody. Any other parameters, including level funding, that is, no change in overall budget, level service? Level service tends to be what we do every year anyway, so I'm not sure we have to grasp that. That's what they do. Their case assumes, you know, they gotta stick with what they, they will do, and I ask for anything new. The goal that we want to set, this is really important, because the Select Board want to set the goal for the year-over-year residential tax increase. Brian, are you listening? We've never done this before. Do we want to ask Advisory, the Town Finance Team, and the Town Finance Team to present at least one budget that projects, and I'm making a number here, you can search number by school as a reasonable goal, projects a 3.5% year-over-year residential tax increase and reflects an estimate of the 1123 parpy values. And I say that because Mr. Fahd took a look today, Mr. Spelly wasn't reachable, so maybe to look at it, he's, he's very good at this kind of stuff. And he looked at today, went to MLS, and what's that one?
Public Records.
Public Records. The year-over-year residential tax value increase in South Row is 16% again. So now December, this is through today, it's not like you say, well, the fourth quarter's gonna break it down. This is already happening into the fourth quarter. So it definitely good, which is why I'm saying, do we really want to try to set some parameters tonight? Because it looks like it's going to be another really, really tough season as far as the debt split goes, only one way. So that's my introduction. So Andrew, I'm gonna turn off the computer, let you say what you have to say.
No, thanks, Kathy. I think, you know, you covered off basically what we talked about in that meeting and subsequently. And I think the only other part I would add is, you know, when we talked about the alternative budgets, whether or not adding staff hours or resources adds something to services or something, otherwise I think also is there a possibility of revenue generating position? So a net neutral position of which the costs, you know, adding the resource will bring in additional revenue, and then it's, you know, the ROI is there. Obviously, in town government, there's not a lot of those positions, but I think that's another consideration of personally where I would consider adding a staff or adding hours where there's a revenue component.
All right, so the next date is 11/28, it's a bunch of X. So tonight, we need to basically give Brian the parameters that we want him to relate to the departments as far as what we want them to come back with, at least as far as a base budget. And then do we want, you know, to allow alternatives when we've got departments that really need something that is not in the budget for fiscal year '23? And so, so I've teed this up, so turn to my, my other.
Kathy, one more thing before you go, everybody. I think having it set on 12/20, who we would want to come back at the end of January? I think we probably want to extend that into early January, depending on what things go. But my anticipation is that Advisory would meet with all, you know, the usual department heads with the big budgets to understand what's your budget at, what's happening at. We're not going to necessarily scrutinize, you know, besides asking all the questions we need until we get all the budgets together and look at what the final numbers are. And that's what I kind of anticipate, our January BD being, looking at which budgets do we feel need to be trimmed? We have questions on, have those people come back? Some budgets are just going to be, okay, we increased whatever the SAP increase was. Level service, you know, we have to come in and talk about what would they do in the future and kind of what we do with the narrative. So I think having those meetings at Advisory, Select Board can certainly watch those or attend, but hear, hear the messages from all departments and then have them come back in January if there's any budgets that we need to further refine.
Okay, you know, so on 12/20, assuming you'd be ready to show us the rev cap, right? Which I'm sure is gonna scare us, right? So we get scared on the 20th, right?
Correct.
As far as we see. And, okay, so then, I still think we need a preliminary pick, Select Board. Because we haven't seen anybody yet, right? Because we need to pick who we definitely want to see, and it's probably some we definitely want to see. Maybe three for sure, whatever, schools.
There's not going to be those schools by then.
Schools will all, but we have to make such schools and schools differently. So you're right. So there's nothing wrong with that, and adjusting that as we go forward. But we started, so we at least have told those, we definitely want to see those, so they can get them, because it's a Saturday. So you want more people, well, ahead of time that we expect them to. All right, so let me go this way, and I'll turn over you to comments from Advisory.
So a couple of comments. Do we have an idea of what we are going to use as our starting point for free cash? And I'm looking at Brian.
We have, so as you know, free cash is about 1.9% higher, which is what we use. I think at least our opinion, the floor of us, was that we were gonna use about 1.3%, and the reason for that is that it's a store from average. And then the rest, it's gonna be a discussion, maybe a stabilization fund, Apple stabilization fund.
So to be clear, you're proposing, because we've talked about this one time, it's starting to stabilize since we've got $610,000 or so in stabilization fund. We haven't added anything to it in years and years, so really don't have a bunch of stabilization fund. So is now the time to truly start looking at things that bounce, that causes problems, like free cash? And say, we got a, we got a healthy amount going into this year, and we want to, you know, take off a piece of that, build it into a stabilization fund, and start this year, or is this a terrible year to start? So I, I don't think we should decide that tonight.
I asked starting point. I didn't say that.
I think you got it, really see what this looks like, and then start making.
I just want to make sure we all know where we're starting at when we come out on the 20th, and we have a bad number. Never increase.
So you said the four of you, you two, Mark, and Paul is four, okay. So you pick 1.3% is what you're.
Even capital, even direct capital, some of the capital would be number one.
I personally don't care what you call it, as long as they're, so I've come around, I've come a long way from. Okay, so I agree.
So, second point is, are we all in agreement that we would use ARPA to offset capital only?
I'd say we're in agreement that we use ARPA to offset one-time things, because capital tends to be.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, so I just say I brought it to one-time things, so we don't.
Okay. Okay, and I think this is going to be a rough year for the operational budgets. I think we're gonna see, the swing is gonna be worse than what we had last year. And I, I think we just need to be really conservative in whatever number we decide to do for the swing, and probably 15 or 16 is probably the minimum that we should go. So I think in doing your models out, we probably should look at like a 14, a 16, and an 18, just to see. Okay, 14 and 16 at a minimum, and you can decide.
No, I agree with you. I think all the officials mentioned a 12, and I don't think, no.
No, no way.
Use three, so.
Right.
I think 14, 16.
I agree. Yeah. So I think, I think it's gonna be extremely difficult with a, let's say, let's call it a 16% swing. And, and whatever recommendation the Select Board has, we know it's hard to keep people, right? Like, we need to, but, you know, they're gonna come back with some number that has to go in there, right? I just, it's gonna be extremely difficult to add a position this year.
I think the one thing we can do tonight is at least take a stand tonight on that piece of it.
Right.
But take a stand, because I think that message is starting to get through.
I, I think it has to be an extremely compelling reason to do it. And even with that, I don't know that that's going to be able to fit into this particular budget. I just, I just, even when having some potential relief from, from ARPA on the one-time capital, I, I just think the operational budgets are just going to be difficult for us to absorb. So I'm anticipating a tough.
So do we want to tell Brian that we want to see that first round, no matter what the budgets that we presented, the first one has got to be with no new hours, no new positions, period? And then if they want to submit a alternative where they make their case for whatever they need, that's fine, but we've got it.
So I, so for, I, I think anybody that's gonna ask for new hours or a new position, I would request that we see them anyways, on the 21st or 28th, whatever date we end up on. So I think it does make sense for us to have both versions and, and have him work the one without new hours into the. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you guys, so we. That could be, we are. Okay, so.
So this preserves the ability if a department or department had wanted to make the case, they can make the case.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you brought up a bit about the SAP, because that's another factor that that's gonna be a higher number, right?
Social Security's gone up 87%, 1123.
What? Eight, you said?
8.7%. Is recalling increase for. So Sam, any comments specifically about parameters? Sorry, Lisa.
Just a couple. I think if there's any message we're gonna be sending to the departments, it's setting a parameter less is more this year. I think if there's any message we're going to be sending to the departments, it's setting a parameter, less is more this year. I, I, it's gotten me very hard pressed, knowing how we're going in, to see any large increases in the operating budget. I think I'd be looking more towards level funded or a small level service. To a small, I think it's, it's going to be a hard sell. I think the taxpayers had a little bit of sticker shock last year, when, you know, we thought we were good with 12. And we came in higher. So I think people are really going to be watching it this year, and I just think we need to be very, very careful. I also agree, if somebody wants to add hours for a person, they're going to have to come and really make a hard sell case. I mean, it, it's tough, it's tough for everybody. You're not seeing raises in the private sector either, you know? So the cost of living is going up for everyone, and not everybody's getting enough to cover. So I think we need to be very cautious in that, which I know this board is anyway saying. So I guess those are my main, main points as far as a parameter. I think 14 and 16 is spot on. I think we need to prepare for the worst and hope for the best.
But you know, one thing to caveat that is, you know, last year, it, it, you know, if commercials go up 40, 60, it's when they split, right? So we don't know about commercial yet. You know, we'll prove the, at least for now, the worst part of the pandemic, restaurants closed and buildings sitting out. So I don't know, but commercial has rebounded a little bit too. So maybe they go up and so that the difference is not, you know, 13% like it was last year. But we don't know. So there's always that to, to, to ignore, but that was still. So at least let me just make a comment. In, in, in the private sector where I am, wages are going up a lot. I mean, we, oh my gosh, we're having to do my business to just compete with the price waterhouse Coopers and. I mean, it's amazing what's always been done, just in two years as far as beginning accounting dollars. It, it's crazy. So in our world, in municipal world, you know, we don't have control over the vast majority of increases. So it's because they're all dictated by the city.
And I agree, I just, my, my point was Kathy, that not everyone in the private sector is getting the raises. You know, maybe the grocery store workers or whomever. It's not everybody is getting the 8.7% quota or whatever. There are some that aren't. So we just need to be, and again, this board always is, and I'm not saying not, but I'm setting a parameter. That's where I'm looking at it, that less is more this year. It was every year, we say this every year, but I think we're really facing some hard challenges this year.
So Andrew and I went to the annual. And the town minister from Norfolk is quite a financial whiz. I mean, and he relates this much, so he was one of our key notes, right? So we went to his breakout session, and he said, he's so right. You just get assumed it's going to be three and a half percent as far as your overall budget, because that's your salaries, your salaries, all salaries. You've got these contractual increases built in there. Of course, it's going to be at least, let's just say that, I don't want to give that away, right? So you're starting at 3%, no matter what, unless you want to cut something. And we tend not to, to do that. So, you know, we're talking about a 3% increase, and they were talking about split on top of that. So that's why this is really hard to say, Brian, I want 3.5% please, of your year. It's going to go, yeah, right, weird. So this is, this is really hard, because we just had some built-in stuff that, I know. You just wanted to add one comment that the other cost item related to the personnel board this year is the implementation of the data study.
Right, they're presenting, and they're doing on, on Thursday. So, you know, that's another dollar item.
That's not going down.
I would just add, that's my mantra for the shift, less is more.
Sam.
Thanks, I appreciate the bleak outlook certainly, and I think 14, 16 of the split is. On the other hand, I mean, sort of like the, boy, you cry wolf. I mean, as Lisa said, every year, this is a terrible year. I guess my concern is that, A, you gotta send a message that it's a tough year, and, you know, encourage people. I don't want to inhibit people thinking creatively, new ways, new things, et cetera. So I'm personally interested in hearing thoughts about people who have ideas about doing things differently. Maybe if it makes the use of the new hours, new position, or whatever, I guess I'd like to hear that. And understand what the potential might be. I think to Andrew's point, if somebody comes in with a position and says, this person is going to generate, you know, three times their salary in revenue for the town somewhere. I think that could be a sensible conversation to have. So clearly, we're going to have to make smart decisions now. And I'd like to have more expansive consideration early on in the process with the message that this is going to be tough. We got more hours or bodies here. Make flexible, I guess, at this point, they expect that it's going to be tough.
Okay, a question for you, so really focusing on the operational budget square. So when in the process to envision there's a presentation from the capital planning committee, or just the outlook for what the capital article is going to look like? That's also part of the picture here, right?
Would you tune me out when I open this? So it's 12/20, so Cal is coming 12/20.
Okay.
They've already agreed, so they'll be ready, so that's all set.
Okay.
And advisory will be there too, so they're going to come and make their presentations, as far as what they recommend, so we'll have that number. Brian will have, he's going to have his first, let's see, rev cap, that's in Excel workbook that night, where you'll have that all factored in. So we'll see the first look at what it looks like overall, including capital on the 20th of December. Okay, so we find the sort of piece, are you going to ask for the narratives that you always do with the budgets?
I think so, I think the question is whether or not we ask them to speak to it or, or write it down. If it's going to be recorded, so it might be to speak to it, some people might want to write it, but.
Because that was a chance for them to basically say, you know, I really wish you let us do this, you know? It was a wish list too, and how could you do things differently? We always know that we try to, you know, empower them, give them ways to do things differently that might save money, but there's payback.
So just to add to, a couple of things I had on that list too, was, I think each department head's going to have to take a hard look at the supply cost line items. So energy, fuel, all those estimates need to be as accurate as possible. I think those ones are ones that are going to fluctuate, just carrying over the number, as we see already with electricity from this year's budget. And then with inflation, it's probably a good idea for us to look at our fees again. We, we looked at it, I think, two years ago, and we increased some, but some we kind of were in the middle of the range. And I think right now might be an opportunity for us to be higher in the range.
What are the key fees that you're?
I mean, there's like fire alarm inspection and.
Building permits.
Building permits, dog licenses, you know? Yeah, there's, you know, transfer sticker even, you know, anything. But, but the transfer sticker, sticker one has pretty good numbers behind it. But, you know, I just think it's worth taking a look again, two plus years of high inflation that we should probably look at.
That can affect you because you're 24 budget though, because it's going to end up in free cash if we do the increases. But eventually, you know, help, so.
But if, if, if we increase those, Brian, that'd be more, you know, willing to release free cash for us, maybe. Global revenue estimates. So I'll turn it over to Howard.
I'm the new guy, so I'm going to. I can't hear you, what did you say? I'm sorry, I'm the new guy, so I'll be figuring this out, man. I, I'm this round, so I'll have better, I guess.
No worries, why don't we go to Marcy, any feedback you want to add?
Hi, select board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. No real feedback right now, I agree with the Saturday meeting plan. I think that's a great idea, and we'll be happy to help out by reviewing all the budgets, et cetera. So I look forward to the written parts, Andrew. I'm glad that we're doing that again, it was very helpful last year to those of us who are still relatively new. And that's all I have for now.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody. I was trying to track with what Kathy was reading, so I apologize if I missed anything there. I know that we'll get to review that in writing later perhaps. But a couple of comments that I had, I agree with the principle of, I think, everything being discussed here. Although one thing I was curious about is the, the comment on having two different budgets perhaps presented. I think that's a really good idea. One of the things I was thinking about is if we want to set a particular increase in the budget based on what we expect, you know, is, is reasonable, given inflation and operational costs rising, and hold each department to, to that level. But then also a second budget that maintains a level of service, not just a dollar figure. Because I do think people in this town really appreciate a lot of the programs that are put on. And it's part of what makes this town so great to live in. Obviously, we know that the financial landscape is, is very challenging. And, and it's reasonable to expect us to have to cut back a little bit. But I do think it would be great to see those two budgets, one with the more restrictive, constrained view, and then one with what it would take to maintain a pretty similar level of service to the town. The other notes I had, I think it'd be helpful in the budgets that we get, at least that advisory sees, if we can also see what grants are, are helping fund some of what they're doing. Sometimes we have to kind of pry that out in conversation, and that would be helpful. And then, I think actually that was it. Yeah, that was it for now. I'll, I'll definitely review and writing everything Kathy read off, but those were my immediate questions and, and comments. Thank you.
Can you send it to everybody?
Just send me the latest word. And Tim?
Nothing specific at this time, I'm in general agreement.
Brian, one, one question I have for you that Adam brought up, that is an interesting concept that I thought of thinking aloud, is, with the budget, can you vote on a budget and then have separate war article? Or like strategic admission, like almost like an add-on on a contract? Right, like, so it would be an add to the budget, because you vote on the main budget article. And then like you would have a capital or a capital article, or other articles in the war. That might have a budget impact, but it could be like, add a new resource or XYZ department article.
Expanded service.
Correct, an expanded service article.
Library open on, you know, extra day.
Exactly, and that would add to the overall budget, but it would be its own separate article. Yeah, I mean, that's how we do like our budgets. Work, because you have your main budget, and then you have all the strategic initiatives, and the initiative you voted on, et cetera.
I thought, you know, you had made this point in the past, that to have you know, some set aside for where in the middle of the year, we need some study, engineering study, or something like that.
Well, yeah, that was another thing that, that we've talked about in the past, and sure, stay, we'll reserve. Like, like if we wanted a grant, having set aside pool of money for matching grant opportunities or studies to be done.
Yeah.
Almost like a management consultant under the select board, or yeah, something we talked about in the past. But again, that's in the grand scheme of things, that's relatively small.
Yeah, we do have an article that's $800.
Okay.
Yeah, we have one that exists, we'll just add to the language. I think the discussion about the grant writer that Sam's brought up, or a couple years, please, we should have that. And, you know, truly, let's talk about it, as far as whether we should have a grant writer that writes a lot of grants for town. And, you know, under the theory that, that grant writer would more than pay for themselves, because they know how to really write commands and go after. So I think we should have a discussion. So Brian, so rather than necessarily try to find a way to come up with a 3.5% year-over-year increase, with a 16% split, or 16% increase in residential real estate prices, maybe what you do is is say, we just, we just give us the number, using the easy man, as far as what we need to take out of the books to get to there. Because I just want, you know, tell me he says, come on guys, can you do better? You know, the answer is, well, we have to cut $2 million to get to this. And what department do you want to get rid of? You know, let's start taking a walk, right? Give the library a little. You know, when you do that, nobody wants to get rid of, you know, that department, right? But I think you gotta make the case that, you know, there's just so much you can do when you've got this kind of pipeline that we do. Now, maybe, I don't know what Cal is going to prioritize, but I've got an idea. But maybe they come in, schools could always, you know, you know what schools are going to do, right? We already know, I will say this, we do know one good thing so far, which is the demographics of Algonquin.
Region shift.
Yep, they're, they're, they're the same as last year, so we're not going to have to worry about anything other than our share of a normal budget increase, right? So it's not going to be the 9% of what it was last year. So we do know that, that's one good thing. We do know free cash is a lot, so if we decided to just lose it all, that's there. We got the ARPA money. So we do have a few things that are in our, on our side to do this, but 6% is just hard to.
It can't go on forever.
No, I think, you know, with interest rates going up, it's going to start, not going to definitely quit. But it's not soon enough.
Well, I think the other question is, you know, do we want to press hard on revenue generating or tax revenue generating opportunities? Whether that's tips or other things to look at. And I don't say this, so it's part of the budget, but having people think about if that would increase their operational budgets to look at more revenue. That's what I was trying to get at with the revenue component aspect of, of the operational budgets.
We should always, we should always be looking for non-tax revenue, right? So Andrew and I came away, we enjoyed the screening, it was actually very educational. Most of the people down there were kind of new to finance committees. So, but we got, the speakers were really good, and so we came back, you know, got to talk on the way down the back. So we came back with some ideas, like TIPS. Wes, we're all, you know, bragged about taking Olympus from us. Yes, the successor was one of the speakers, and he just bragged and bragged about that, as far as the tip goes. So, you know, we're sitting there, we're going, you know, we know where you got a bunch of. So, yeah, I think that's a discussion too, we should have, we should always have. So tonight, this was, this was Lisa's first question, so we've got two dates on the table, January 21st and 28th. Anyone have a preference, advisory?
I don't want to work, is anybody on the phone have a preference for either the 21st or the 28th? Adam, let me start with you.
I'm checking my calendar. 21st, 21st or 28th?
Yeah.
Those are Saturdays?
January, yeah.
Okay, hold on. Sorry, you can skip me while I'm looking if you need to.
Sure, Marcy, or you have any?
I should be able to do either, it looks like.
Tim?
No preference.
Both look okay for.
I'm agnostic as well, I would just ask the finance team is like, and maybe for advisory with your schedule, and making sure you get everybody in that you want to get in, and then on the back end, like, I want to make sure there's enough follow-up before we have to print the warrant, or at least, at least be done with the budget, right? Like, like I don't want it to like linger on, but.
Since 20th gives you another week to.
I thought Mark was, actually, that was his preference.
Yeah, I didn't know that, so. Yeah, the Mass Municipal Association meeting is the 20th and 21st. You know, there's more focus on Friday, but the Saturday is the annual meeting of the Selective Association. We can work around, if the 20th is the best date, we can work around that. So, guys, okay, so, alright, so he prefers 28th anyway. So it sounds like maybe just get a 28th, everybody. Because it gives you another week, advisory, right?
Yeah.
And we've got two months until town meeting at that point, so. Okay, Brian, we said, yes, level service budget, okay, no new hours, no new positions, and at least the first crack at it. And then they can do something, maybe what they want to, with an explanation, a really good explanation to, to explain why they have to have new hours. Of course, we can have no new hours, period.
Kathy, what time are you looking at potentially starting that meeting at?
I think it's going to be a full day.
In the past, we started around between nine and 10. We used to do the all day.
Should we think about a snow date in January?
Or in November?
So, I mean, I don't know. Is it something we should put on the table that's at this point just. Yeah.
So maybe the next.
Actually, that's a great idea, Andrew. Yeah, that's a great idea.
So. I can say yes, not necessarily with public comment, but yes, as far as.
Yeah.
All right.
Twenty eight, nine AM, I could do a schedule.
Yes, you just say the final one.
Yeah, I could do that.
So are you going to set out what you read to start? That would be helpful. Do you need that?
I have a motion to adjourn. Roll call vote, Adam.
Sorry, what are we voting on a journey?
Marcy.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, everybody.
So nice to see you.
Thank you for sticking around so late, guys.
So this is the first quarter report. It's going to be very fast and hopefully easy. As quarter one, I know when we did the memo, we mentioned that this this quarter is not useless, but it's not the most valuable quarter either. So. I think as far as you're not going to get a lot of. Unless there's something odd that happens either up or down with the revenues in the first quarter, it really doesn't tell you a lot. So. There wasn't a whole lot of things I could look at and say that are. Really weird yet. It's pretty comparable to last year. Still up. But the the odd thing was the dump stickers that I picked out that were down, which I thought was strange because we adjusted the fees. But in looking in October, we're over from last year. So I it kind of balanced out, just like I was hoping it would. The only thing I didn't mention, my short paragraph is the ambulance fund is trending very close to where it was last year. It's a little below, but it's immaterial. I think October is better, actually. So on the revenues, that's about.
No questions for Brian? With just a quick overview on expenses, we had two modifications in the assessments for Assavet and Avantin. Were to the good on eighteen thousand, so that's a good way to go for the first quarter. And we are going to be monitoring departments very closely this year like we always do, but you know, energy. Electricity, things like that, hoping for light snow season, I don't know how fast it's going to shake out. Um, but we're hoping to be able to cover, which is within the budget. The water fund is trending good, we actually, the revenues for water looked good due to the drought summer we had. There was a lot of water. To last year.
The study's ongoing for that. We just put the data request into the last week, actually, to the Abrams group for the study. So that's underway.
And when we get a, like our preliminary budget, we'll send him that for April twenty four. And the only other thing I want to mention is FEMA, we're still working through it, you know, COVID is still here, but FEMA is definitely still here. And the FEMA vaccine plane, we've got the forty two thousand that we're not sure if we've uncovered, we'll see if they will. Let's keep you guys, you know, informed of anything I hear from them, but. They're pouring through the lot through the planes right now, so. And I'll just keep you informed, but that's really about it.
The field by the art ended last week on Friday. Thursday, because Friday was on Thursday, so they are now compiling statements. And it hopefully, the OPEB side of it is compiling their statements too, in fact, that's doing good. So my point is that hopefully it won't be like last year, a little bit held up. A little bit. Everything was running late and it was their first year. This year, I think we're going to be a little more timely, so.
So we're hopeful for that.
Question about the FEMA reimbursement, we have any anecdote later from other business colleagues about whether. Others are getting reimbursed for this particular issue or not?
Oh, the other towns that I've spoken to, they don't have the same issue that that we have as far as the funding of the contracts. We were pretty unique in that, so. And a lot of towns didn't really do the FEMA upfront, we we did a lot more. Obviously, to kind of, you know, capitalize on that thought of it upfront. But.
So fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, you know, I hope that the the fact that it's that's related trumps everything else, so. Yeah.
So a couple more. The table one I am worried about as far as just before is the tension. And, you know, the performance, investment performance this year has been horrible, bonds and stocks are down, we didn't. So I'm worried about that one. So we'll just have to see, but some good news, we've written the last check to Norfolk as far as the settlement, right?
They're down that side for. Four, we're up and down, so.
I think you're right on the pension, the pension is capped, I think, by their policy, but at eleven percent or eleven point five or something like that. That's why I think it's going to be, so we're going to match it, but.
Thank you. Everybody drive safe.
Yes.
All right, we're almost done, and remember, this is an hour. Okay, so chairs report, I've only got two, it's already included to the conference opening point two. So we've got some things we want to. Encourage it on, because we've heard some interesting things, it really was interesting to come out and you're here. We actually, there's something, you know, I can't even say what, we're really, we're going to get shit compared to some, I think we've got some crazy stories. And so it was definitely worth watching too. Then the second one is, sometimes I don't think people in this town know what the youth service department actually does. New problem do, right? But they do a lot of programs for residents that right now are not being taken advantage of. They are trying to promote or do these programs that are trying to help people. Help themselves, self-reliance, because it's really hard to 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 get people to help. So they've got a lot of good workshops, et cetera, that are being promoted, but they're not being well attended. Myself, I did a post on them, they they do some of that there, obviously, we saw them at the Public Safety Building. But they're really creative programs, so I'm hoping, you know, who's ever listening, I start looking at what they're doing because they really are designed to try to help us. All the things that we've got to do in this world, so I'm hoping that they will start to implement as far as it's supposed to, because they work hard.
Kathy, if I could follow up on that, I actually had a chance to talk to the technology committee's consultant. Website user experience thing, I don't know if they've signed up for that. But one of the comments that came out of that discussion was a a part of the website that actually might integrate. The availability for a variety of programs, because the town has a lot of financial aid programs. Assessors Office, Youth and Family Services, seniors, et cetera. To find a way to. Website, say, you know, you need help with X, Y, and Z, click on the button and here are the programs that you might go to to find that kind of help. So I think we can do a better job communicating that, so I agree with that, a lot of people.
That's it for me, so someone is going to tell us all about the Veterans Day presentation.
I will, thank you, Mark. Kathy and I had the absolute pleasure of attending. It was a great turnout again this year, the weather held out, it was absolutely beautiful. I wanted to take a second and just share, the veterans had a speaker, a young female veteran from here in town, Keri, Keri Kendall-Martin. And I will tell you, it was. Very few people in the crowd weren't touched as she told her story. What's our being a a young female veteran begin with, her grandfather didn't want to join the service, she went into a special unit. To begin with, within the Army, and she was a paratrooper, and she talked about her experience, and then when she came home. And how it affected her her day-to-day life, that you don't realize when you go, when you come back, your life is totally changed forever. And she talked about the struggles that she faced with PTSD, and again. Completely inspirational and amazing young woman. You know, and it was great to have a woman veteran marching the greatest walk, so they were very well represented. Very few dry eyes, you know. As she spoke, I think she probably could have gone on for about fifteen, twenty minutes, and everyone was just mesmerized by her. By her rawness and her willingness to share her experience. It was, it was truly heartfelt and gut-wrenching at the same time, so it was a beautiful day, beautiful ceremony. I think everyone that came out, like I said, Kathy was there as well, and. And I don't know what more than I could say, but it was, it was truly a pressure, a pleasure to speak and a pleasure to be there for the event.
You did a great job to, we will represent also. Okay, anything else?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
So Andrew, I assume you were going to do the St. Mark's Street.
Sure, so last Saturday at the Public Safety Building. From scheduled from ten to noon. We had a public forum for the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group, and I thought it was a success. I would say there was about twenty, twenty-five people who attended, Sam was there. Patty was there, Mr. Perry was there, so they came in tonight. And. I want to thank Vanessa and also Kate Berry for doing a great job of, you know, setting up some of the logistics and publicizing it. And Margaret Landry did a great job of. Setting it up and Freddie Gillespie had a very good idea for kind of the format of it where. You know, for the first half, there was kind of an introduction, each member of the working group gave a perspective. And then group was kind of broken up into four different kind of breakout sessions where people. Review different designs and give feedback and ideas. Roger Challen was also there as serving kind of a moderator role, although. But the. The event just kind of like ran itself mostly, and so his role actually was just kind of fairly limited. And, you know, I thought that there were some, there is a lot of paper generated from this. Margaret wrote down kind of a whiteboard of the comments that people had. So there'll be some work and kind of like going through all this paper and maybe summarizing it, but. Then also want to mention that Patty had a, I thought, a very interesting idea of a. Proposed design that kind of incorporated, that she has further thought about and. Incorporates kind of history walk concept and so. I'm interested that, you know, you've heard this feedback at some of the working group meetings about. Is there a way that there's kind of a lighter touch, I think is the phrase, of something that would be. Simpler and. Maybe not a very expensive design, but one that's still kind of meaningful, and so that's interesting, I think that. Starting to see some. Representations of that, so I would just say, you know, stay tuned, I haven't had a chance yet to speak with. Margaret about scheduling the next working group meeting to. Review this, but overall, you know, one thing I thought was nice was that the event. Scheduled to go from ten to twelve, but even by like twelve thirty-five or so, there's still, most of the people were still there talking and chatting.
And Madam Chip, since he's done that, I can't yet, I'm a spur of the moment, I really want to talk about this. Could you change your agenda, since he's just talked, continue your thought?
You can, Mr. Ray, you can talk in public comment. So Andrew, remember, there is a deck. That we read on. So you think that's going to work?
For interim report.
I need to go back to my report, Vanessa, which was my year ago. So. We have had an application at one of the EFR positions for the Community Center for AHA Committee. And it's someone you know well, making more appealing. So the question to the board is, do we want to have any kind of push point, or do we want to go ahead and? Not require that?
I'm flying to a point.
So we'll have it on the, so if Brian agrees, we'll have her on the agenda for the next meeting to the point without her being here. So, question, do you want to come and talk to her, or do you want to go ahead?
No, I'm thinking, I'm just thinking how. It's an opportunity for people that may not know her, I know, and I think she would be great, I don't have an issue. I I don't have a strong preference.
You're okay, but they're not coming.
Yeah.
You are, you are, Andrew?
Yes.
All right. So just wanted to get the.
We just asked, does this have to do with the DPW? Are you going to give an update on that if you do?
Yes. So I just wanted to give the board a quick update on the various reasons we have going on right now. Of course, the DPW superintendent is the primary one, the closing date for that application is this Friday. So then we'll, you know, start that, we do have a consultant on hand to assist us if we need to do some outreach. So we'll get back to the board in the next meeting whether or not we need to add that process in.
Any advice so far?
Yes, we have eight so far. Very hopeful for the rest of the week, Sam.
I have been double-sized, okay.
In addition, we are recruiting a new employee in the Water Division. We had a resignation just recently from a full-time member of the Highway Department, but that hasn't been posted yet, but that will be. Very soon posted, so pop that up when you're out and about. We are also looking for a full-time dispatcher as we know in the Police Department, Police, Bank, Public Safety Department. So all of that information is available on the website if you want to share that app with anyone. So that's for the recruitment side. Items we're trying to publicize and get information out to the public from the website. Tomorrow evening, there is a meeting regarding the four ninety-five and ninety interchange improvements. So if anyone's interested in attending or watching that virtually, information is on the town website.
Vanessa, I actually saw an earlier version, I have PDF slide thing, so I think that's interesting.
Okay.
You can actually get it all by just reading the slides. They read the slides.
Okay, perfect, we're happy to post that.
Slides are sort of confusing too. Sort of see what's happening.
And just wanted to add that there is a booster permit on Friday. Information also available on the website if anyone is still looking for any booster. Thank you very much. And so we are to the final public comments. So Mr. Perry, before you get started, can you sit down there and you'll introduce yourself?
He doesn't, I I know you didn't think, I I only met her on Saturday, but you did a bang-up job, come sit here, because I'm not going to talk a little bit about what you're doing.
All right, okay, my name is David Perry.
So three minutes or less.
Oh, wow, three minutes, okay.
Oh, wow, three minutes. Okay, bang go. Let's go. David Perry, trade chief manager, UST on the planning board and selectman. We had this amazing meeting on that Saturday. It was really amazing. Andrew and Sam can bet me up. This lady here did a bang up job. It was only by far the best idea I thought, but I'm not really gonna talk about that. I'll summarize it. Instead of calling this darn thing a park, call it a history walk. And she has this dynamite idea about coming up and winding back down to Main Street. Without forgetting the park, I've come to talk to you about where a park, I'm talking about the tricentennial. Because I've had this buried in my mind, and not until Saturday, when we're talking about parks, where should parks be? Where should you spend a ton of dough? It should be very, you know, visit, well, if it's a neighborhood park, it should be in the neighborhood, not up there. But I'm talking about a really, really significant park, a sort of of, for the tricentennial, because the more I think about this, which is way more than, way more than this little project up the road here. Your tricentennial, when's it coming up?
Twenty seven.
What?
Twenty twenty seven July.
Okay, it's nice, five years away, right? Right? What?
Not quite, but on.
Okay, well, not quite, this is not like far away. So here's my idea. Let me say, but what's the most, if you're gonna do something really, really significant for the tricentennial, where should it be? It's gotta be incredibly visible and amazingly public vocation. It's gotta be where people walk by it, and they're gonna see it when they drive through South Park. So where is the most significant intersection in South Park? It's right out there. It's eighty-five and Main, isn't it? Everyone knows that. Everyone, you know, everyone passes through there. It's got a light, and so forth. It's been, you know, very nicely done. Thank you very much, Board of Selectmen. So let's think about that intersection, what potential that has for a meaningful tricentennial. I sort of need a bit of emotion here because I, it's just hit me, this is it. This potentially is it. I mean, it could be amazing. Okay. Four quadrants, right? Four corners. What's on this corner? It's the library, a lovely historic building, a jewel. What's on the next corner? It's a view of St. Mark's across their magnificent lawn, worth a million bucks. That's what people remember about South Park, the library and the view. Then you go around the corner, lo and behold, you've got a community house. Fantastic, beautiful. Everyone's proud of it. Let's get to the fourth corner. What's on the fourth corner? I bet you if you ask other people in South Park, they won't know what's on the fourth corner. It's something, I don't know what it is, to tell you the truth. It's something small and not very attractive. I'll tell you what it is. We own that corner. There's a house there, which you, Board of Selectmen, the previous board, donated or, you know, had made a deal with Housing Authority. It's an affordable housing rental unit. Why? Because when Barney was on the Board of Selectmen after me, I'd been long gone by then, the Main Street was going on gangbusters, and the problem was how to get enough land to make the sharp tour turn when you're heading, what's that, east? You take that sharp right down eighty-five. It's more than a, it's less than a ninety, so it's very difficult to make the turn. So we had to have land. And instead of eminent domain, lo and behold, the, the homeowner, Bryce, is always gonna sell and move to Florida. And so Barney's over turned to get an unsafer buyer. The Board of Selectmen agreed. It went through town meeting. It's an obvious buy for not much money. But now, let's think. That's the fourth corner. Now, get your brains thinking. You know, it's crummy looking. I mean, I, I'm saying the truth here. It's not a very appropriate place for a house, regardless of they're wealthy or not. You know, it's on the corner. It's got, it's got trucks. We're trying to, you know, putting on the accelerator to get uphill, aren't they? They're gonna get uphill. They're coming from the south. They're heading off, it's a jet. Engine's going. I gotta turn the left or right, I guess. Just so the engines are running, the exhaust system's noisy, the lights are going. And then it's not a very attractive place to live. Let's face it, you know, facts, facts. But what is it a good site for? Can we make a swap? Find a house somewhere else? Or even two units somewhere else. Make the, make the Housing Authority whole. Cause we don't wanna kick a person out. You know, find him a little place to live. You've got five years, heavens sake. It's great, five years, more than I thought. Now, look, that land is like four feet below grade. That's the problem. That's why, that's why no one knows what's there. It's sun. The house is way down the back, that sort of granite rock wall is like, it goes two feet up, four feet down, six feet down. It used to be huge. I think it was actual silver, lovely silver, silver bark on this, maybe, and they're all cut down, it's all gone. So the trees which made it look nice are all gone. So it looks like, I'm not gonna use the word, but it doesn't look very nice. It's not, it's not even a single tree. I don't know why. We had all these trees given us for free. We didn't put one there. Amazing. I couldn't understand it. So, buy it, move the, move the tenant out, replace the house, raise the, raise the level of the land to add more, more than the grade of Main Street. So you, you know, it's, let's back up. And not having this wall in front, but the wall at the back, the wall is, could be a backdrop, a very attractive wall, but why not use the, the stone? You know, the marsh of South West, city of San, Town of Stones, whatever it's called. You know, use, wrap the wall high, high in back. So it's a backdrop. You know, you're not looking at the monument, looking at the house beyond it. You're looking what's over there, and the wall, the wall forms a background, okay? Now, what can you put there? It's a, it's a very, it's a half acre, probably less than a half acre even. It's tiny. But you can put a statue to the founders, E.G. I don't know who they are. Fay Burnett, for instance. Is there a statue to them anywhere? I don't know. Actually, I ran this idea by St. Mark's years ago, and I got the brush off. But the more I think about it, this is the answer. You know, there should be one, but they didn't buy into the idea because I had other ideas for them, and they spent their money elsewhere. So good for them. Anyway. Now think about this. Think about the potential. You know, I don't care what the statues are, but, you know, have a committee, your committee is, you know, figure out what the statues are gonna be of, if there are any statues. But you know, you should certainly have benches, because people walk by there. They don't have benches up here. No one's gonna sit on the bench up there. And you know, Patty agreed with that. You don't wanna have benches up there. You want people to walk up there on the history walk and, you know, this is what, this was an Indian ground. This is the wood. This is town hall. There's the, this church with a spire. There's the old cemetery. You know, this incredible history walk. Forget the park up there. Put the park here and make it really, really significant. You know, I, tricentennial, set up a committee, you know, fix the house issue. Fix the, you know, the design issue. Come on, don't have an S hanging for this, for God's sake. We need a really class A landscape designer, you know, monument designer, not a road designer. It's a problem up the street, you know, really. I'm sort of telling the truth here. And you don't want someone like that. You wanna really class A, get a committee to figure out who we're gonna hire. Okay, you know, there's some people at Harvard University.
We brought the gist, but you're like nine or ten.
Okay, I'm done.
And I know you, I feel bad. You've come all the way.
No, I wanted to get it off my chest. I felt like to wait till next week. I said, no, I'm gonna come tonight. It's hot off the truck. It was a fantastic meeting, wasn't it? Everyone doing today was hostility. You know, these goddamn three designs, overdesigned, overkill. What the hell have we got a park up here for? We ended up leaving. We're no damn park in a lovely history walk. You know, it was a great meeting, wasn't it? It was absolutely amazing. Say that, because you're not very enthusiastic.
Thank you.
No, there was. The key was we had coffee and donuts that we had.
Yeah, we had great coffee and donuts. Afterwards, everyone sat around and chatted. It was fantastic. You go in, I, cause I was bent in there to be incredibly critical of what was going on out there. I said my piece, but I'm not saying that tonight, because that's not what I'm here for. Anyways, thank you so much. I have a hip replacement, so it's not very. I think I'm gonna do a demo here. When you have a hip replacement, you dare take that first step. You know, get out of bed at four o'clock in the morning, everything hurts, and you dare do that. So what, this is what you do. I'm gonna send a memo to my doctor, you know, helpful hints to those about to cut the pieces. What you do is, this is like five AM in the morning, you do this. Wait there, wait there, wait there, wait there, and then you go like this. You waddle, and it's magic.
David, I waddle, and I don't have a hip replacement.
Anyway.
Thank you, David.
Keep up the good luck.
Have a good night.
Bless you to adjourn.
Salute, second.